Is that... Maybe we could even have you guys come to the high school one for your practices. We could do some stuff afterwards. Because we used to do that a little bit too, so yeah, I'll talk to Reed. Yeah. Yeah, no, it'd be fun. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Hey, look, Nate, look at those guys.
We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Richard not going to be here today?
Yeah, just, Chair, I just got a call from him and he will not be available for just now. So they just took it, so you will not be available.
Okay, let's start with the agenda. Erica, did you want to change?
Yes, I'd like to add a closed session at the end for attorney-client privilege to discuss ongoing litigation.
And I've got to just mention something, Commissioner Nelson, on that? With your permission?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, we're reaching out to our labor attorney. We didn't know that this was coming, so we just want to make sure we're not missing something from a posting standpoint. So while the board meeting is continuing, we'll get some feedback from the attorney and just make sure we're not missing any steps there. So I just want to make sure the board's aware of that. And one other item is--
Steps in the, in your, in the discussion, or?
Well, steps in posting for going into closed session. We just want to make sure we're not missing any statutory steps. We can just add it to the agenda now. We'll follow up with the board as we progress. And if it's something that we have to withdraw per attorney recommendation, we'll let you know, but--
Can we ask Brian McDonald?
We have a county attorney of record here too. Yeah, we're not, I didn't mean to ignore you, Brian. I just, we just didn't know that this was coming, so that's why--
I don't believe it's an action item, so I don't think it's any-- information.
And we love our, it's important for our labor attorney to be involved in this too. That's--
Any others? Changes, additions?
I was going to offer one more thing, Commissioner Nelson, and that's the ordinance here that we handed out to the board.
Where would we put the, and this, this ordinance is just for our information today. It's not, it's not a public hearing today, but it's the, it's the initial discussion point. We will, we'll need a ten day to, we will need a public hearing on it at our next board meeting, and we have to start publishing that as soon as possible. And then we'll act on it at the next meeting if we decide to. So I think we just under reports and correspondence under would be appropriate, probably.
You have it on the agenda, Commissioner Nelson, at 10:20. We have cannabis ordinance review, if you want to keep it there.
Then we don't need to add it to the agenda?
No, we don't, but the document was handed out, so I wanted to make that clear.
So--
Kyle was kind of taking the lead on advertising and stuff.
He'll be here.
Anything else to, on the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by John?
I will second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, minutes?
I just, I had one, I don't think it's a mistake, but I just put a clarification. It's on page eight of 131. We're number two, under highway, number two. Did we approve? Weren't they asking just for $45,000 or?
No, the total was seventy.
Total was seventy. But we already, didn't we already pay them something though, or?
Forty-five thousand was project savings.
And the other was, I mean, contingency.
Contingency, okay.
The total was seventy.
That, that makes sense though, okay. Because I know that's what it said in the agenda, but I couldn't, just, I got confused.
That's correct.
John, the only thing I saw that I seemed a little bit, it wasn't, I don't think it's wrong, but under the tram, said motion second to accept donations for the Dutton Locks tram, the amount of thirty thousand for repairs, plus an additional eleven thousand for tram tickets. I just, it's just not--
It's not worded well.
No, maybe it should just read three hundred and seven, three, thirty thousand, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, period. And a note that there was an additional eleven thousand sixty-five for tickets for the tram tickets for the year? Because it's, it's repairs and--
Yeah, the people, when they donate, they give X dollars and--
It's just not for repairs, though. It could be improvements or--
Could be anything.
I mean, if we rebuild, rebuild.
It was improvements or upgrading.
So, anyone have anything else under?
I didn't, those are the two I have. I don't have any more.
No.
Okay.
I think you did a good job.
Thank you. Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion for improvements.
I'll second.
Dave, second by Erica. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Open forum? Nate, anyone on there? Brian, you grab them? If you don't, yeah, you don't need to. Okay. Okay. So nobody. Okay. Anyone else on there? Thank you. Reports and correspondence.
Oh, I can go first. I got, John and I had a transit meeting. So one, the rider ships were down for last month, but we're up nine point two five percent for the year. So the transit is busy. The, we got, he got, she has to turn in his financials to the state. I think that has to be done here pretty soon. So he was working on that. He's, he's going, he might be a little short of funding from the state, so he's going to, he's trying to cut his budget and he's looking at what he can do for that. So I think, I think it's going to be okay, but there might be just, he might have to use a little bit of extra money out of his fund balance to figure that out.
I was just going to continue on transit, you know. Did say that we're looking at the end of the, for the transit building. I think there's some opportunities for rental income, you know, and the, and the Fair Board does rent out their other buildings.
Yes.
And Kevin did state that he would like to be rid of that, having to go check on that and--
Yes.
Keep and pay utilities on that building as soon as possible, so.
Yes.
Hopefully, end of August, he can--
I think it's going to be that poll is pretty soon, right, end of August.
And I think, I think he said they're, they're still, still working on the, on the appraisal? That the state had some word changes?
Yep, there's a, they had a word change in the appraisal, which they, which they have corrected. And then there's also on the lease agreement, there, there's a square footage that's wrong, or they think it's wrong. So as soon as Jim is able to fix that, then that'll be correct.
That'd be close to fifty thousand.
About fifty thousand instead of fifty-four thousand. So that would--
Just waiting to confirm that.
Yeah.
Well, I would like to start transitioning that building over to the Fair Board.
Yes.
And, and we could, and what my goal would be is to get the fair, get, I mean, we could charge them and then we'd have, when they, we'd up their, well, we'd take out of the reserves, or we could just hand it over, and then hopefully, at some point, they could be, you know, near self-sufficient with that, with that income. It might offset what we give annually, so. And, and I tell you that if you, I mean, I served in the 4-H building and, and served the ice cream and, and the list of improvements out there are endless. So there's, there's not going to, I mean, just upkeep on refrigeration at the 4-H building and, and safety concerns. And I just heard that the roof on the horse barn is pretty well shot, that they're probably going to have to, you know, rebuild. So, I mean, they've been very conservative over the years. There's nothing that's elaborate there. So hopefully, we can transition this to them and, and at a zero dollar cost, so they can put monies in, into the, in backed into the facilities and hopefully get some income to continue on the fair, because it was an amazing fair. The grandstand event on Saturday was like, luckily, I went in early and, and had a blanket down, so I, so I got some seats. But people were trying to find seats and the standing room only on, in between.
In between.
It was, it was just a really, really well-attended evening. And we got, we were in front row in the bleacher, so we got speckled with mud. It was, it was quite fun.
Fair was good, it was good this year, it was really--
And that eighteen-car final event was--
Yes.
Oh, that took forever, it seemed like.
It took forever and it was loud.
Yeah, no, it was very loud. But it was very, a beautiful evening for it. The second thing I want, and I talked to Travis a little bit about ongoing expenses. They, they said they're going, they have more expenses to turn in, Mary, for the, that, that money that we had. And I said, make sure, and he just wanted to clarify that all upgrades qualified for that. And I'm, and I said, I will check today, but I'm, I'm saying yes, that, you know, they, any upgrades to the buildings, because they did about thirty thousand in electrical and--
Yep.
So they, they need to upgrade a piece of equipment, they certainly can do that within our--
They received some grants for that, but they didn't cover everything.
Right, but I'm just saying, are the funds that we dedicated--
Yes.
If they spend them on, on upgrades, that's appropriate, according to the board. And I, and I said I would ask the board for clarification. I said, yeah, I think so, so.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, if that's--
And then that, another one, another thing too, when you go in that, the 4-H food building, that's, that the whole ceiling is brand new. That's part of what we, and so, and then the bathrooms are, I mean, it's nice now. It's, it's, it looks, it looks good, it's vented well.
I got a tour of the building when I was there helping Thursday, late afternoon. It's a pretty nice building.
Yeah, and it was well-attended. The time got kind of goofy on the senior day. They, they started early.
Started early, yeah, because I--
Or earlier than they have in the past, so I came in when they just, when, but we had people there. And I tell you, I got a compliment, Jim Joy, he was at, he was serving.
Yep.
And he also was at the livestock auction and bought a lot of premiums. I mean, he was, it was pretty amazing how much, how much he, he was involved. So thank you to Jim Joy for, for supporting the Becker County Fair and-- We had another legislator serving, and he's a good friend of mine, and I'm drawing a blank on his-- Matt Bliss was there. So thanks, Matt, for coming down and serving. He's got a, the northern portion of Becker County, and he served pie and ice cream. He's a friend of mine, a really good guy, really, really nice. So thanks to legislators and the commissioners that were there. Thank you.
One more thing about the fair. Keith Sonberg, who passed away here about two months ago, or month and a half ago, has been, had been the president for a very long time. His father was the president before him, and I just wanted to make a note of that, that the Fair Board did an awesome job, because he, he, it's ama, it's unbelievable how much stuff he did. So in a month, in about two months, they had, a month and a half, they had to kind of scramble to get everything organized. So they, and then they turned out to be a really good fair, too, so.
Yeah, and Travis Shower is one of the ones that's filling in those gaps. You know, they're, they're doing a team, and he said, I never realized how much, how much work went into this. He said, I've been on the phone, he's on the phone quite a bit. So thanks for the, the whole Fair Board, you know, everyone out there put on a lot of, did a lot of work and put on a great show.
Yeah, I just have to say that the market auction was the first one I'd ever been to, and it was amazing to me to see the, the support in the community for all those young kids. So that was pretty, pretty phenomenal.
I'll have to go to the next one.
We'll bring you a check. Because you can't leave there without, without your check. So, okay, reports?
Mine, I had Mahoubi meeting. We, they are currently at eighty-five percent enrolled for the school year, which is really good. Also had our West Central Juvenile, Regional Juvenile Center meeting. We set the rate for the non-members. We discussed budget. The 2024 rate for Becker County is about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars lower, so that's good. And then we just, we had our EDA and Housing Subcommittee meeting, where we just are continuing to explore different ways that we can bring some affordable housing to Becker County. So, that's my reports.
Couple, Pelican River Watershed, nothing too much there. They're working on the next phase of Rice Lake project and the outlet, Little Floyd Lake, that's moving forward. And I noticed some normal permit issues they're dealing with. At airport, we welcome Ross Granitsky to the Airport Commission to fill an expired term vacated by Howard Hanson. Howard had served fifteen years on the commission. Ross is a retired, I believe, airline pilot. And all of them, he goes to Attorney Church here, and I'm a member of, so welcome him. I was elected to serve as vice chair because Howard was, for the rest of the year anyway. And I think this coming year, Becker County appoints street people to the Airport Commission, and the city appoints too, so. See how that goes, and I don't know if Dave Sherberk is still going to continue, getting a commitment from him, and so.
Did you, did you ask, talk to him and see?
No, I haven't yet.
You want to follow up with that?
Yeah, I'll follow up with David. He comes to, has so many meetings, it's summer, he's busy, but as long as we got a corner there. But he's more active in off-season part. Parking lot and fuel system starting mid-August, along with the demo of that old block hangar building that's, that's close to the highway there. So things are kind of winding, or will wind up hopefully by fall out there. And then Dave did report on transit, so it's all ahead.
I had NRM. The Bucks Mills, the Bucks Mill property, Mary, it is done now. So we, we are, that is closed, and we are owners of that property. And it, we'll now move forward with, with the DNR. And we do have a, the Joint Powers is having a meeting out of Bucks Mills. And if anyone wishes to go, I think maybe we should, I mean, it's just a tour. And Nick from DNR, is it Led? Is it Nick Ledke? No.
Clute.
Yeah. Nick is going to give the presentation out there, so it, to the Joint Powers, and that's the red board, that's our Minnesota side of the red board nominating process. And then we're going to go to Bucks Mills. But if anyone wants to go out there and, and get in on that little tour, I think it would be real, if you, it'd be real education. Nick's giving the presentation here, but not, never onsite. So it will be very interesting if you, if anyone wishes to go. You're welcome to. That is, let me get my calendar here. It's next week. I think it's, well, I don't have it on my calendar. I had it, I think it's the sixteenth. I think it's Wednesday, but let me--
What time is it?
It's ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
I'll have to go back and look, and I can, I can send that out. If anyone is interested in going, it is pretty, I'll have to look at my, anyway. John, did you find any more out about the Eagle Lake Park in Frazee?
No, just, just what I reported last time, that there, the group or the association--
There's, I think there's a purchase agreement in hand, and I think--
There is, and they're just got, trying to do some quiet Kyle action to clean up the ground results there.
I think just letting everyone know that the county is willing to partner with to keep that, give that public access.
Mayor about that, so things fall through to--
We talked about the RAC Committee, that'll be on the agenda. Dutton Locks Shelter, we need to, additional three thousand dollars for Apex. That'll be on the agenda. We're talking about the bike path maintenance and speed reduction. The, some of the issue from the Dutton Locks Trail out in the town now is that the first week was open over the fort, there was a bike race on it. I don't know if it was sponsored by someone, but I had a, had a complaint about, for pedestrians, that these bikers were zigzagging, so we want to maybe put in, you know, press, put a, put a sign, pedestrians have right-ofways and, and please, I don't know, something. Had a review of various kayak launches out there, dock and kayak launches out on, out on, and we've reviewed this before, but this one was a locally built one that, that might be a little bit easier, just a, it looked very, it was just a plastic, and it had kind of the, the notches where you could pull yourself up and, and off on it. And I think it'd be, I think it'd be a good idea to move forward with it, but-- North Country Trail, the North Country Trail is looking at, maybe trying to purchase some land and then, and then donate it to the county, or the county buy it. But it's some land, so they don't have to move the trail, and this one forty is for sale. There's two little tracks, and if they got it, they would like to maybe look at primitive camping there. So it's an ongoing. Discuss the tax forfeits sale. Bud cappings on, reviewed shoreline lease payment increase. And we were thinking we had increased from five hundred to five fifty for, for hunting cabins and twelve hundred to fifteen hundred for, there's some lakeshore leases. We didn't want to bump it up, those up too high, but that's, that should be an ongoing discussion to those lakeshore leases, because there, there's some specs in there and wordage that are, should be reviewed sometime, but. And then we're working on sharing costs at the Highway Department in their building. That was it for NRM. The only thing, Dave and I had courthouse, but I think that's--
Everything's on the--
Yeah, I think most things are, are coming for us. You have anything else?
Yeah, I have the DAC. Just wanted to mention a couple of things. So the DAC, they're financially doing very well. They have about six hundred and fifty thousand in CDs. They have about another hundred and two, another, almost another two hundred and fifty in ready available cash, so. There's a lot of, they're, they're looking at, look at what needs to be done, what needs to be maybe fixed up, what needs to be spent on, and they, and so I think it's going to be, they have some money that they can put into the facility and maybe, we approved to buy another new bus for them to use, and so. And then also, we just hired a new program director, I believe it was about a week and a half ago, so. Now, I don't have any idea what her name is, I'm sorry. But we hired a new one. And I think that's all I have.
Okay. Let's go through to appointments real quick. I have a couple of appointments. What's the? What is, Brenda's? The senior, is it the Senior Council on Aging?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
For the--
On Aging, Senior Council on Aging, is that?
Dancing.
No, no, it's not Dancing Sky, it's the--
What, who's in charge of it?
The Bonnie Moes.
Bonnie, Bonnie Moes.
What's the name of that committee?
Anyway, I'd like to point Diane Methune to that. I was just informed at the fair that we have, that we have poor representation from. So I would also like to ask a commissioner to also sit in on that one, have two commissioners on it, because we haven't been getting any information, or it's been a little, we've lost, there's communication shortfalls there, so we need to--
And what, what committee is that?
I'm going to look.
It's the council, is it the Council on Aging?
Senior Council on Aging?
Is that what it is, Senior Council on Aging?
It's they--
Do you know when it meets?
They meet quarterly, and they said their main, I mean, it, they, there's a lot of programs that they discuss and try to promote, but their main thing is, is electing the outstanding seniors of the year is one of their--
Oh, sure.
One of their, and doing on the, at the fair, so.
I would be willing, I don't, I don't have very many committees, so I'd be willing to sit on it.
I don't know what it's called.
Is anyone else interested, or we could appoint Erica on the committee?
Sure.
I'll entertain a motion as such.
I'll make a motion to appoint Erica to the committee--
Senior Council on Aging?
Senior Council on Aging.
Oh, second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So I appointed, did I, I'm going to make appointment to appoint Diane Methune. Did we need a motion on that in a second? Okay. Okay, I make a motion--
I'll, I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then for the Recreation Advisory Committee, we have one person at large, one at large yet, and I think we are going to advertise that online, just note, but see if anyone has any. We have one person that's expressed interest, but we should just open that, make sure that's open for a little bit to, to allow other people that, countywide, that are interested in the Recreation Advisory Committee. But I would like to appoint, now, I haven't got confirmation that she's, said she wants to think about it, but Lake Park has a Betterment, Betterment Committee, and Abby Anderson is on that. And I would like to appoint Abby Anderson or her alternate from that Lake Park Betterment Committee. So she can, if she can't do it, then someone else can step in, but I think with them on that. So I'll make an appointment of Abby Anderson and--
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And then if she can't make it, that she can send an alternate from the committee, if that's appropriate. All right, any other appointments?
So are we all filled with the RAC Committee other than the at-large?
I think one at large.
Okay.
That was the only one missing, yeah.
All right, and we're going to go to the report, but I think we want to jump in and do the law library fee. Do you want to do that first, or?
Oh, well, I think this will be pretty quick if Christopher, I'm sorry, County Attorney McDonald would like to come in, and then, and then right after that, we can do the, the dental break.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to introduce Bill William, William Wilson. He's our county law librarian, if you haven't had a chance to meet him before.
Morning, Bill.
Morning, Bill.
Are you new here? Just kidding. Recognize you, you've been a staple of our courthouse for, for many years.
Commissioners, we're here this morning to ask the board to consider reinstating the county law library fee. The law library fee is something that's attached to court filings, and most, the most prevalent thing would be criminal convictions. It's a, in the past, it's been a five, ten, and most recently, a fifteen-dollar fee. We met with the, the county law library had our annual meeting, including Commissioner Okerson, and we, at that, that level, had asked to reinstate it. The next step is to come before this board.
Maybe just explain what, what we do with that, those monies then, once we get them.
Well, we, we have a number of services that we provide down in the law library. Books are becoming a thing of the past. They're over there with scrolls. But what we do is we, we have, let's see, one, two, three, four. We have about four different places where people can come in, sit down, and actually do their research online, which is the way the whole thing's moving anyway. And we have to pay for that oddly enough. And so that's, that's where much of our money goes. And every so often, we put on other programs of similar nature. But that's pretty much what, what we do with our money, is we provide the services that a library would provide. Yeah, and, oh, yes, we also have a self-help clinic. A number of people like to represent themselves or-- A number of people like to represent themselves or are forced to represent themselves because they can't afford an attorney. And so we have a program where they can come and get help through Stu, let's see.
Stu.
Stu, Stu Kitzman is down there on Mondays and Thursdays. I think he's limited to Thursdays right now. But he will sit down with them, go over what they need to know, as much as that can be done. And that, that way, it's a wonderful service for people who can't afford an attorney. And oddly enough, he, we pay him. So that's another place the money goes, but I think to good use. We get very good reports about it and there are a lot of people who haven't got money to slam down on the table. So that's worked out very well.
I think you've also spent some money on fixing the area up.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that was.
That goes back a couple of years.
Yeah.
We have, let's see, one, two, three, I think we have four offices down there where people can come and meet and have a bit of privacy, which is a nice thing to have if you want to settle things. And so that works out nicely too. But I think overall, I think the, it's working quite well, all the programs we got.
Well, thank you. And we suspended the fees, was that during COVID?
Yep, it was August 2020. Jay, Judge Carlson, Commissioner Knutson, myself and, is that everybody?
I think so.
We had voted at that time with the, the stress of the pandemic and the fact that our, our fund was very high and, and actually causing the state law librarian to get after us a little bit. So we have spent it down substantially.
Do we still need to purchase the books then? I mean.
No.
Okay.
We, well, I, there are a couple of books that have become pretty standard in the legal field with lawyers. For instance, involving jury selection and that sort of. And so we keep, I keep those up because nobody has really converted those into online.
Okay.
So there are some books that I will purchase. A lot of the, a lot of the books that tell you how to do, how to represent yourself have dried up and gone away. I guess they just aren't publishing them like they used to. And so, but of course, that on the other hand, has been, has been replaced by the online research. And those, those computers down there that do the, are available for online research, do a marvelous job of explaining to somebody who's never used one. We never, never get complaints on how do you do this or if they sit down and read it, they'll.
With this reinstated, it'd be average around 30,000 a year.
Yeah, that's a rough guess based on last year, but that sounds right, Commissioner Oakson.
And our balance is getting depleted, so we need to. It takes, this is going to affect in January.
Yep.
Takes a state that long to get it all set up and approved and.
They asked for a nice, clean starting point and.
So I thought I'd make a motion to reinstate the law library fees.
I think it's.
Resolution 1A.
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 Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Dave. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, thank you. Okay, and then we will go with Jane on the dental grant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you, Pat, for inviting me to be here today to share an update about the Dental Innovations Project, the Northwest Minnesota Dental Stuff. We have come to the, pretty much the conclusion of the $100,000 Blue Cross Blue Shield Grant that the county was gracious enough to host for us as a fiscal host. And we have really completed all of the activities that we had hoped to do under that grant. Just as a quick refresher about the project, we do have a serious shortage of dental care for low-income residents here in the county and in the region. And so our Northwest Minnesota Dental Project was developed to help address that issue and that need for our residents. We do have an awesome collaboration going between Northern Dental Access Center and Apple Tree Dental, two nonprofit providers that work and serve low-income folks here in the region. The project thus far has helped us to develop a concrete foundation for getting two new, well, one new clinic and then an expansion at the Apple Tree Clinic in Holly. So at this point, Northern Dental Access is on board to purchase a building in downtown Frazee. For those of you that know the Main Street area there of Frazee, where the Sipe Drug Building is, the remainder of that building is Shell. And so they've reached a tentative agreement to purchase that building. And all of the construction design plans have been drawn up. They've come to a tentative agreement on a purchase price, all of those things. Apple Tree also has a design plan drawn up for their expansion project. Essentially, we've, we've got all our ducks in a row. We're to the point of needing to jump into the major fundraising campaign part of things now. We have submitted grants to West Central Initiative, which is hopefully a, some, they have a Main Street revitalization grant that they're offering for projects very similar to this. So that one has been submitted. Where the, the project has come to the point where it's much less expensive than originally planned. So what we originally thought was going to be about a 12 to 14 million dollar project is down to about a seven or eight million dollar project between all of, among all of the different building aspects of that. So part of that came through because of this new idea to partner with the city of Frazee with that downtown building. So that was a much less expensive option for the, the new Northern Dental Access Center to build. So yeah, we're, we're at the point of fundraising. Once we receive those first funds, as you know, most fundraisers choose to kind of jump in on the tail end of things when they want to wrap it up and, and do that. But Northern Dental Access would like to secure the first million dollars of the 3 million that they need for their construction in grants before they would consider taking out some loans to, for the other two-thirds of that. So I did give you an update here. You can review all of that. On the very back page is probably the best kind of summary where we're at right now. We have engaged many, many stakeholders from within the region to help us get to this point. We're very grateful for all of that involvement. And then fundraising updates is there. So we have about 173,000 in cash that we've secured so far with an additional $40,000 capital campaign amount that's been pledged by Becker County Public Health. So we're very, very grateful for that. We have also maintained a $25,000 grant that was given to us from the Becker County Children's Initiative. So those dollars are still there. So at this point, we're, we're nearly, we're, we're looking to get to that first $100,000 mark, obviously, which would be about a 10th of what we need and then looking for those other grants. So of course, if the county has any dollars available that you'd like to, to pitch in and help get us to that point, we would love to see that continued support. But otherwise, any questions that you have?
No, it's, it's just, and maybe you can touch on it too, the, the, I mean, sometimes people think of their, their dental or their teeth as a secondary, but I mean, that's, it's kind of your primary health is your, your mouth. And I mean, there's so many, so many things can go wrong if you don't have good dental, dental hygiene and dental care. Maybe you can expand on that just a little bit where, you know, how the, how this centers. I mean, it's, it's very, very critical that you have a good, good.
Yes.
Good.
Good oral health.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, Barry. Thank you very much for pointing that out. And that is something that we work hard to educate everyone on. Part of our whole collaboration project is a medical dental integration project or component of that, where we're hoping to bring all of our health professionals together. Your body is, or your mouth is the entrance point to your entire body. So absolutely, without good oral health, the health outcomes and disparities are enormous for people that are not able to achieve good oral health as part of that.
I'm going to date myself here a little bit, but when I was a kid in, in elementary school, they came into the schools and did those fluoride treatments and ah, they got very terrible.
Well.
That was some terrible.
Could I ask if you remember, that's where you chewed up all those things and then you looked at your teeth?
Yeah.
Well, that was, that was, that too, but no, they did, they did actual fluorides and, and you put the, I don't.
You swish it around. You used to have a little cup and you'd swish it around.
Yeah, it was the horses brought us in.
And actually, we do have, we're thankful for the partnership of some of our nonprofit providers that do help us and they do bring services still to the schools.
Yeah.
And we're working to expand that throughout all of the counties because otherwise they wouldn't be getting, we wouldn't even have the rates that we have for access to care, which is only about 30% right now, so.
And those, I'm, everyone I'm sure here knows how expensive dental care is. I mean, we've, just a, just a cleaning and a, you know, just a cleaning and a review is a couple hundred dollars. And that's.
Yeah.
But, so do, and I think.
Anything to add, Annie?
Yeah, I've been working in public health for a long time and Jane and I have been partners and so passionate about dental. And we kind of see it firsthand with these kids and these situations that come about. So it's just, it's, it's so trying and, and just passionate for me that we can get a dental clinic in Becker County. I think it'll bring lots of great things and lots of good growth and, and definitely some good preventative care for these kids, so.
I'd like to share just one story of a family from Becker County. I was contacted by the school nurse from the Frazee Public School and she had a child in her office that was in a lot of pain and had some pretty obvious infection going on in, in their mouth. And so we worked together and thankfully, we were lucky to get that child in the next morning at Apple Tree Dental in Holly. That child that day was later admitted to the hospital for that infection. It was that severe. And so, and that mother had tried, she had tried calling everywhere and she, she had no other alternatives. And she finally did approach the school nurse, which I'm thankful for. But that's just one story of, and that's right here in Becker County. So I get calls like that several times during the week. And not everybody's able to get, get seen, obviously, but this new clinic will.
Even good home care for, for, is expensive. I mean, if you, the Sonic or the, the electric toothbrushes, no, they, they, you think they're a, they're just a fancy gadget, but they do an amazing job of cleaning your teeth versus just the regular, just a regular toothbrush. They, and, because I remember I went and they said, well, you should do this, because I, I can't remember what it was, but they said, and they, they recognized that I had bought one, that my dentist sold. And I, your cavities go down to nil if you use those regularly, so. But they're not cheap and the replacement brushes aren't cheap on those. I mean, you can, you can certainly, so everything, everything is expensive if you want, want to do it well. So unfortunately, not everyone can afford that. So this is a much needed in our community. So any other questions or?
No. I was just going to offer something, Commissioner Nelson, on page 15 of the statement of work, there's a final report that's due at the end of September. That does release some contingency money of $3,000. I'm, I'm just going to make the assumption you have an origin where you could use that money. And so if, unless the board has any objection, then once they complete the report, those funds will be released and it will go to the dental project.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we'll keep that in mind at the, at your, you know, at year end and seeing what our, what our funds look like for future contribution to help meet your goal.
Thank you so much. We genuinely appreciate that very much.
Well, the health, you know, if you start young with good health to start with, it, it's just, it's the foundation, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Pat?
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioners, the, just under report, just a couple of items. Class and comp study, as you are aware, we have some timeline deliverables of September 1st, where we have to provide that completed class and comp study to each of the bargaining units. We had a little bit of discussion at the Finance Committee about reviewing that with the county board in some fashion. And so we will continue to finalize that. We'll have one-on-one meetings with each department head too, so they can review where their job description is, their position is within the wage table. But we eventually will like to have some discussions either with Finance or County Board prior to making it official and releasing that on September 1st. And so we'll, we'll want some guidance from the board and what, and what way you would like us to provide that to.
I think what we discussed is when it becomes available, we'll email it out to the individual commissioners and then maybe run through Finance just for a review and then it will be provided to the union, so that's.
Yep, I think that's appropriate.
And then the final thing I'd just report, because I have other items here after that, is we're getting invites from bargaining units to negotiate for 2024 and we're very eager to start those negotiations here in September so we can finalize those and incorporate that into the 2024 budget. And so those are the items that I have that aren't listed already in my, in my area.
Okay. So did you touch budget?
No, I'll hit that right now. Budget 2024, so on page 17, you've got our timeline there. We are at now the section of, we, we've had one-on-one meetings with each department head and so we're on schedule. The next step right now is to revise those budgets, bring them through the committee review process. So those of you that sit on committees will, will have the chance as commissioners to contribute there. We will then combine those into a preliminary budget. And then of course, the dates that we want to hit is financial committee review over the next couple of meetings, including board review of a revised budget. And finally, we'll need to set the preliminary maximum levy on September 19th. So we are on schedule with, with our budget review at this time.
Did you want, are you ready for Bruce?
We are ready for Bruce, if you are, yeah. Come on up, Bruce.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Pat, did you want to tee this up?
Yep, the presentation will be coming up online here and it was, Bruce Kimmel, of course, is our financial rep from Ellers and Associates. He's going to talk about two items. He's going to talk about the capital improvement plan, that opportunity and review that with the board, answer the questions. And since he's also here physically, we wanted to have a little bit of discussion of the, of our current bonds that we have at Becker County and answer any questions about the, the nature of each bond and whether they're callable and any questions that you might have from a financing standpoint. So I will send it back to you, Bruce.
All right, great. Thanks, Pat. Welcome morning. It's good to be with you.
Morning.
Been a little while since I've been here in person in Detroit Lakes and it was a nice morning for a drive, so. Like Pat mentioned, I wanted to start with a little bit of a bond update. So this first slide shows your existing debt service. That's all, the levy supporter debt service that the, that the county has. And so you can see that the blue portion of the bonds is relating to the 2012 bonds. That was a refunding of some bonds that you issued for the courthouse addition. The orange section is the 2017 bonds. That's for the first part of the county jail project. As you recall, you funded the second part with cash reserves. And then the green portion is the highway facility portion of your 2022 bonds. You recall that you had three portions in, in that bond issue just last year and this is the highway facility portion. So all in all, you can see you've got a pretty moderate debt burden and I would say that this is definitely considerably lower than a lot of other counties, which is, which is great. But you can see that you're at about 1.5, 1.4 to 1.5 million for the next couple of years. Then you drop down to about 1.1 million for several years before tailing off in the late 30s and early 40s with the last couple of years for the highway shop. Moving on to the next slide. So I've given detail on all three bond issues here. The, you'll see that in, in some of the couple next slides, some of the numbers are, are not shaded at all and some are shaded that are salmon color. This salmon color means that these bonds are callable currently. So at any point now or in the future, you could decide to pay off these bonds early on the 2012 issue. That said, you'll see that the coupons, the, the interest rates that you're paying on those bonds ranges from 2.25% up to 2.5%. So really, as compared to current investment opportunities that the, that the county has for its cash reserves, it may or may not be a great opportunity to pay out this debt. You may want to just do it from a policy perspective and that's totally fine, but you probably could be earning more on CDs or treasuries or what have you by using, by keeping your cash reserves and just continuing to pay on this bond issue. And you can see that it's, the debt service is about $440,000 for the next several years and then tails off with about $200,000 in the last year. Going on to the next slide. So the county jail bond issue was a bigger obligation on, on the part of the county. And you can see that you do have about three or four years that are still non-callable. That's the the unshaded part of this debt schedule. And then, starting in 2028, the bonds are callable through the the final maturity in 2037. Here also, the non callable maturities are at three percent coupons. That's what was that premium bid that you received on that bond issue back in 2017. And then you're also in a pretty low rate situation with your callable bonds ranging from two percent to two point eight seven five percent. Here, you're paying about six hundred and thirty, six hundred and forty thousand dollars per year in debt service for this jail financing. And then finally, this slide here is actually all three purposes. It's got the solid waste, the transit and the highway facility for the 2022 bonds. But the highway facility portion is about, excuse me, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of this six hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year. And you can see you've got several years to go before you hit the callable bonds. And those interest rates are also quite low at two to two and a half percent. So we're not really seeing any great refinancing or or redemption opportunities for the bonds. But that's actually a good thing because you've been able to lock in such low interest rates. And remember that these rates are fixed. Only you have the option to prepay or to refinance these bonds. Otherwise, you've got this debt service locked in for as long as it goes. Any questions about this before I move on?
Oh, very, very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, okay, great. Moving on to the next slide. I did wanna just remind you as well as the public here that you on your last bond issue were upgraded from double A to double A plus by double by S and P. Double A plus is the next to the very best rating you can possibly have, which is a triple A rating. And I just included some of the verbiage about their decision to upgrade you to double A plus. And, you know, I won't read it verbatim, but this is really a testament to the strong work that you've done as a board, as well as your staff, both administrative, finance and your department heads, to really build strong financial management here at the county. Obviously, they looked at your economy, which is very strong, your strong management in in budget practices. And they really thought you guys were a slam dunk for that rating upgrade to double A plus. So if and when you ever decide to issue bonds again, you'll be able to take advantage of this double A plus rating.
And I think in the past, well, we've been double A plus prior to this this school round.
You've been double A, right?
We've been double A plus years ago.
Okay, okay.
And the the only step higher is triple A.
Correct.
And I think Ryan Tangen at the time said that the only way you could get, I mean, there's no possible way for us to get to triple A just because of our our low income in the our lower income in the county, I think is what he stated back then. Because we we are, we're not economically, we're we're we have good, we have good property values, but our income, income countywide is not where it would need to be to be a triple A.
That's right. And even if you did have that those wealth levels, you would probably need to up your fund balances even more. And and I couldn't make a good case for you to just keep hoarding more cash.
Right.
Yeah. And in.
We had all that cash, we wouldn't need bonds.
Right, exactly, exactly. And you've got obviously great access to capital, the market knows Becker County and and that would not be a problem going forward. Going to the next slide. This is a ten year look at the interest rate environment for muni bonds. And specifically, the the darker blue line in the middle between the light blue and the in the orange is what's called the bond buyer index, which looks every week at bonds that are maturing twenty years from now. And it it takes a snapshot of where rates are for those twenty year bonds. And the reason I wanted to show this is, you know, we've been in an all time low, historical low rate environment for some time that only ended last year. And people have talked about how much muni bond rates have gone up and they have gone up some, not as much as other types of interest rates like for commercial loans. But even with the rate increases that we've seen over the last year or so, you can see that we're just above the ten year average, which is that gold line on the chart. And we've actually been holding steady, even with recent rate increases by the Fed, bond rates haven't increased more because people are still clamoring to buy muni bonds. There's too few bonds being sold relative to the the demand for them. And so that's helping to keep a lid on interest rates. In addition, if if I had taken this chart out, you know, twenty years, thirty years, you would see that this ten year snapshot is at the low part of the chart, right? So bond rates used to be a lot higher and then they've just been coming down for about the last twenty years. And and then this ten year is a snapshot or a portion of that.
Yes, I was surprised on how low the the rates were. I mean, I was thinking they'd be more in that five to six range, but there, if you read here, it looks like they're between three and a half and four, something like that.
Exactly, yep.
But not that we're looking to borrow any money at this time.
No, but just again, to show you where things are at and and to that point, if we can go to the next slide. Last week, I worked with one of your counties, your Comptessrick Counties to the south down in Lee Sore County. On a bond issue, they're doing some remodeling of their government center. It needed about four million dollars for that project. And they decided to do it in a ten year issue. They felt pretty confident being able to pay it back over ten years. And just to give you a sense of where the market is at, we received ten bids on the county's behalf. And that demonstrates again that high degree of demand chasing relatively few bonds. That ten year issue was at about three percent. You can see the winning bid. Maybe a year or two ago, we would have been around one and a half percent. So yes, rates have doubled, but still three percent fixed for ten years is really good by historical standards. And if we go down to the next slide, what I thought was interesting and the reason I included it is that even the tenth place bid at three point three percent was, you know, basically only a quarter percent higher, more or less, than the lowest place bid. So that the bidding pattern was pretty aggressive across the board from first to tenth. Also, if I could just go up for one slide, I know some of you are interested in the markets. One thing that's just interesting to me and is an anomaly, but if you look at the reoffering yields, you can see that we're actually in a declining rate environment. Usually, interest rates on any kind of investment, whether it's muni bonds or treasuries or what have you, you know, the rates go up over time, right? Here's today, here's ten years from now. But you can see, look on the reoffering yields, that the short term rates are higher than the longer term rates. So the bond market is anticipating some sort of a recession or at least a slowdown where they're actually taking lower rates in the future than they are demanding now. Not a huge difference, but still some difference. So that's really unusual for us. And, you know, you'd expect that to at least flatten out here sometime soon, but who knows? So. All right, go on to the next slide, please. And actually, the next one, thank you. So Pat had also asked me to come up. He and Nicole and I have been talking so a few times about capital improvement planning. And so I did wanna just give you a CIP one on one type of discussion. How many of you are familiar with what a capital improvement plan is at the county level? Most of you, okay. So this is a tool that really is sort of a best practice amongst among local governments and is one that we would definitely recommend that the county have in place. And it's really a tool to help you look across all your departments and look at your future capital needs, right? Whether it's large facility projects, whether it's road projects, whether it's buying vehicles or equipment or major maybe computer upgrades. And then it's really a way for you to identify and allocate scarce resources, i.e. tax dollars, across those and really plan for the future so that even if you don't have something major happening this year or even next year, if you see something that you know really should get done in 2025, that the CIP is helping guide the way towards how you're going to get that project done in twenty five or twenty eight or what have you. Also, we find that once a good CIP is in place and it's being updated, it actually makes your life easier because you're not having to reinvent the wheel, you're not having to revisit a department head request each and every year. Yes, things come up, but you're working the CIP instead of reinventing the wheel every year. And so both for staff and for elected officials, having a good CIP in place definitely is a more efficient way of of executing on capital projects. Moving on to the next slide. So I won't go through all of these. This is pretty self explanatory, but we look when we're doing a CIP to look at the projects or the equipment acquisitions that are in place. When are they needed based on the priority of the county? How much are they expected to cost not now but at that future time? And most importantly, how will they be funded? Are you planning on using cash? Are you planning on using debt? And if debt, what kind of debt? How long is the repayment term? If cash, where is that cash coming from, right? So it's not just we need a new front end loader at, you know, however many thousands of dollars a front end loader costs now. But which fund is that coming out of? Or are you doing capital notes and how long are you paying those back over time? Moving on to the next slide, please. Some of the best practices are to look over at least a five year planning window. Some counties go ten years. The crystal ball starts to get pretty murky at that point, so five years is definitely a more standard practice there. And you can really set the parameter as to what level of projects to include. We usually see projects that are somewhere north of five to ten thousand dollars. Some county set it higher at twenty or twenty five thousand dollars. That would really be up to you and your department heads. And then smaller projects still go in your operating budgets, right? So we're not looking to capture every crack ceiling or every laptop replacement. Those can still be in your operating budgets, but putting into the capital fund some of these larger projects. And tho- those could be grouped by general fund, highway, human services, et cetera, within that capital fund. So the goal is to really understand your overall capacity to do projects within your current fund balances and in your tax levy parameters and to get the projects done when they're needed.
You know, in Becker County, we talk about the improvements for about ten years and then we decide to do it and put them in a five year plan. So the jail was the discussion point for I don't know how many years. And before that, even the Public Works Building. John, I think you were still working when we started talking about Public Works Building. So we 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 draw things out as long as possible.
Well, at least you could.
Yeah, you're still working, but you were working in highway at that time.
But then you get them done, which is the key thing, right?
Well, and funding is a big, big que- big part of that. And I think the highway building, we and both, I mean, the jail was tough because that's all levy dollars. There's no, we were blessed in Becker County to have a taxing authority on on for road projects. And that helped us immensely in our budget with. So it's it's the legislation gave us that authority and and we thank them for that because I think our roads and and projects have had a tremendous boost from that, so.
Absolutely. Can flip forward, please. So some of the things if you wanted to execute on a CIP that we would want to include, again, would be new facilities and significant improvements, roads, roads, bridges and trails. You can see the other things. Highway department is a key part of this and public safety vehicles as well. And then again, major computer and technology, not every little bit across the organization. Then, next slide. A good CIP is really a participatory exercise. It's not just you on the dais or Pat in his office, but really looking at all key stakeholders across the organization. So department heads, finance staff, fiscal advisor like Ellers, that's optional. We can certainly help facilitate this. We do with a lot of counties. But also, this is an exercise that could be done at the internal level if, you know, there's capacity and ability to do that. And then really, the key thing we find is to revisit the CIP at least twice annually and including once during the annual budgeting process. It's really nice to do that in the fall, make sure that you're on track, you you refresh your memory of what's coming up for the next fiscal year. But then maybe also sometime in the winter of the next year or early spring, revisiting maybe before the construction season. Okay, we've said that this is what we're doing, but is it really what we're doing? Or do some things need to be rejiggered or reallocated? It's it's a living document, even though it's meant to have some importance and some some priority behind it. You know, we don't want it to sit on a shelf and just become stagnant. It really needs to be visited at least once a year and preferably twice. Also, it makes sense for at least one person on your team to own that master CIP. You know, folks can have copies of it, of course, but somebody needs to be in charge of being the one to say, yep, this is the 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 master version, the one that's sort of driving the boat.
I will say that I think our highway department has taken the lead in there in that area. We've had a five year plan with them, a five year road plan, five year improvement plan and and purchasing for, since I've been on the board. I think John's probably been part of that for fifty years now. But I mean, they're. No offense, John, but well, close to. You retired at forty, but.
We've always had that where it's it's updated. And I think what it really paid off and we got X number of dollars allocated for especially equipment purchases each year. So they keep really budgeted and prioritized and not saying you're set, we're gonna replace this this year. Something else might pop up, you you switch things around.
Right.
It was in that.
But in highway department too, we are going over that probably more than twice a year because depending upon what federal or state funds, big projects that they fund, I mean, that's altered what projects we do. So I I'm I'm very confident that highway department's probably doing exactly what what we're would be asking because they they're very flexible on what projects, you know, looking at what projects we can afford and do that year or push them out a year. We've and that's, so I will credit our highway department and our chairs. We are on a kind of a rotation on purchasing. So I mean, they're very close to where we probably need work is some of the building, some of our building maintenance and and future future needs. And that but that's, you know, that changes so, you know, like in the last sense of pandemic now, those needs have possibly changed.
Yep.
I know I was talking to someone and they said the state of North Dakota, Governor Governor Burgum has, when came back and said, we're not gonna be using all these buildings anymore. We're not gonna be expanding government buildings. We're gonna utilize work from home and so that work from home might might save us money and buildings in the future. So there's lots of, it's it's you definitely need to, you know, keep your eye on what what's going on and how how we are affected by all these changes, so.
Absolutely.
And IT is another one where we have to thank, thank goodness we have Judy. Thank you, Judy, for helping us get on track for our long term updates on that. And those IT people, you know, how many of us actually understand IT well enough to 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 see all those big numbers coming through? I mean, that's significant, so.
Absolutely. Could move on to the next slide, please. Then I just wanted to touch on cash versus debt. You know, it's really not an either or type of situation. We see a lot of counties similar to Becker County that use cash for some projects, debt for other projects. And also on facilities, we'll use a hybrid approach, using some cash and some debt. The Lee Sore County bonds that I mentioned earlier, Lee Sore County is putting some cash into the courthouse remodeling as well as that four million dollars that you saw. And and we would expect that Becker County would largely be cash funding its CIP. But again, if there are facility needs or large roads that aren't covered by other funding sources, that, you know, we would maybe be planning for some future debt at some point in the in the future. But again, subject to change. And that's really the the whole point of this is that it is an organic, dynamic plan that does change as the world changes around it. Also, with cash versus debt, we would, you know, when we're talking with communities about this, we we look at equity, what's most fair for current and future taxpayers. And we look at inflation as well. We know that building costs and and other construction costs are going up faster than the cost of capital. So does it make sense to perhaps to do a project earlier using bonds versus saving up cash for ten years and doing it at a future point? Again, it's not an either or, but we always. Again, it's not an either or, but we always want to keep an eye on all the factors that contribute to the cost for the taxpayers.
I know Clay County has done that in the past on road projects, took out a big bond and lumped them all together. So we are, I think we're familiar with that. It does come out at the end that when they all come out at once on road projects, kind of hurts too, though.
Sure.
County did that once in the seventies.
Oh, did we? Seventies, I wasn't born then.
I really wasn't born then.
I was too. Okay. And then last slide, thank you. So and just in recap, I, you know, don't want to take any more of your time, but we really do find that with the counties that we work with, it is a, a CIP is a really a tool for responsible financial management. It leads to better budgeting decisions. It leads to better stewardship of your public assets. And again, we really do find that it helps make life easier rather than harder. Once you have things on a page, you've got that page to refer to and you're not constantly gathering up the same information over and over again. So appreciate the opportunity to be with you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about capital planning or anything else.
Anyone have any questions?
No, I think it's, I kind of like the idea of county-wide capital improvement. It not really help our sheriff's department because we had trouble. We order vehicles and they don't show up for over a year. So the money goes back into the general and that way when they do show up, it could come out as capital improvement.
Exactly. That's exactly right.
Plus is for having it.
Right.
Well, Bruce and Bruce has been a partner with us and helped us through many, many of our projects. And I appreciate the fact that you state that we can do it internally or we can have assistance or any amount of assistance that you, that we need from you. I think, you know, we, we can certainly, we certainly have a need for some improvements and have a capital improvement plan. I, I believe we can probably do this internally with, with you answering questions for us once. I don't know if we, we get a, you know, a charge, a clock charge. I think this is a, I think our partnership in the past has been great. So the trust is there to know that if we need help, we can just ask you for hourly. If we need a, need you just for a day to help run through some things. But I think the partnership is proven and, and have all the faith in, in Ellers and Bruce to walk us through any steps if we need to, but.
Absolutely. And Commissioner Nelson, one, one oper, you know, one possible approach. Pat asked me what kind of cost might be involved with this. And really, the most legwork involved with the CIP is gathering the inputs, right? And that's clearly an internal exercise. It doesn't make sense for us to go around to each of your department heads and, and, and say, well, when do you need this? When do you need that? That really is an exercise that Pat and Nicole and others can, can facilitate. I think where we could provide some value, because we do so many of these, is like you said, on a very limited basis, using one of our templates that seems to work well and loading that in at, you know, not, not a very high cost because we have people, again, that do this all the time. So whether you just want us for Q and A or whether you want us to actually be the ones to build and make sure that the model is working, but have a very limited scope on that, or anything in between, we would be happy to help. And, and we could have this, you know, I think pretty easily in place for even next year, for your budget process for this coming year as well. It's not rocket science and I don't mean to make it seem like rocket science. So if, if it, if you've got the information available or at least, you know, reasonably available, that's something that we could partner with your team on, again, at a, at a very low cost to have in place for this year's budgeting process. So.
Any questions or?
Couple of things could I offer Commissioner Nelson? The, we did some benchmarking, as you know, we did provide that to the board. And about two-thirds of the counties in the state of Minnesota do a county-wide capital plan. So we do think it is a best practice, as Bruce Kimmel suggested. Minnesota state statute doesn't require a county to do a capital plan, but it does recommend through the statute that to do a capital plan. So we've talked about internally as financial staff and Nicole is here as well. And we're, we're very supportive of the idea of doing a county-wide plan. And I think what you'll see and what department heads will see, and we have discussed this with department heads at the committee level, is you'll see an operating budget where a lot of these capital investments that are greater than 5,000 are not in each department's operating budget. They're in the capital plan. And it does, as Bruce mentioned, as was discussed earlier, the ability for department heads to go back to the board and say, look, the, the vehicles, the sheriff vehicles are on order, but we're not going to get them done. We're not going to have, we're not going to be able to use these budget dollars. We'd like to move those dollars to the next year of the capital plan. And so you don't lose those. And with an operating budget at the end of the year, those dollars do go away. And then the big change that you'd see is there would just be another, as you certify the budget at the end of the year, there would be an additional fund called the capital fund where we would put levy dollars and other dollars to support that five-year plan. Yeah. So we're very comfortable moving forward with it, but we do need direction from the board. This is a good opportune time in August to start this. And I guess we're looking for some direction from the board.
Yeah. So if I could piggyback on that, I, I would say that giving Pat and Nicole direction on whether you like the idea of a capital fund, as, as Pat mentioned, and putting those larger vehicle acquisitions, equipment acquisitions, projects in the capital fund, that approach, you know, trying to make sure that they're not being muddled up with operating costs. That's kind of one policy decision. And then if you want, and you don't need to, of course, to say, and go ahead and, you know, work with Ellers up to X cost, that's sort of a second decision. But I guess I would encourage you to take up this question first and foremost of whether you want for the 2024 budgeting process to incorporate a capital fund and try to be a little more transparent as it relates to those capital projects. Pat, would you agree with that?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Well, I'm, I'm not convinced that the capital fund for this year, if we do it, I would just soon like, I'd probably look at the 24 budget cycle. I mean, for starting the 25 budget, the 24 year, just because we are. But I would, if, if we were going to do it, I would like to talk to department heads to see if, individually to see if they were supportive of it at this time, rather than just do it at a board meeting without any discussion with those department heads. That's my opinion. But wish to the board?
My thoughts are with the budget process, departments already got that in there. It just consolidated that to one fund. So it really wouldn't change anything. It just, so, but I think it's something we're going to discuss and come up with a decision.
And Commissioner Nelson, could I respond to the department inquiry? We've had a couple of meetings, department and committee meetings with department heads and supervisors about the five-year capital plan. I think there's been genuine support for it. I don't think we've had any detracting comments or opinions on it. I, I think what we're asking, we are putting on notice in a capital plan that department heads are responsible over the next five years to be planning for capital investments over 5,000 when their life ends, when they need to be replaced, how we're going to replace them, with what funds should we replace them? So it does put on each department head the forecasting responsibility. And we have had some surprises when things that we haven't planned for that we had to replace. And so I think, you know, what we've heard from the department heads, that they're genuinely supportive of a, of a five-year plan.
That may be the case. I have not seen those minutes of those meetings or heard from those. I've not been in attendance though, so I, I can't say one or the other, if they have or not, so. Wish to the board? Move on or want to make a decision?
I wonder if we should wait until Richard, Richard is here before we make a decision.
Yeah.
Because he's not at this meeting.
Yeah, we can bring it up for a decision in our next second meeting. I mean.
I think we can do a lot of the stuff, a lot of the planning internally, I think, a lot of. Because like, like we already have some others that do that, so.
I think we could ask our department heads to put together a five-year plan in their budget. And then, then at our next meeting, we can decide if we want to go complete to the, the, this capital improvement plan, or if we just want to keep it in our budget as we have. I mean, again, like you said, it, but we should have that five-year plan in place, one way. And I, and I know, I don't think it'll change for highway. I don't think it'll change much for sheriff's office. I do think our IT might, there might be some work in IT just because those things are changing so fast. And the security and the, but I don't know, Denise, maybe what Denise would have to look to is space needs more, more so than anything. And what we're going to, I think the big question is space needs, what we're going to do with the property here and, and that, that's a big question. I, I don't know if we can answer that in a five, I mean, I don't think that's answerable today. That's a, that's a moving target. That because, because of the workforce changes, I mean, that, what, what are the needs of our workforce in, for office space in five years, within those five years? It's hard to know.
Can, can we pass that to the department heads by the next meeting that we, they have a?
I think maybe not at the next meeting, have it done, but that we want, we want them to establish a five-year plan. I know, I know some, probably most departments already have that in. Mary, would you, would you say that would be inappropriate? And I think this is a good time for it too, because we've had some benefit of federal and state funds that we've been able to catch up on some of these items, like some of the human service building had some major improvements on their, on their air, on their heating and cooling systems and, but it's not complete. I mean, it's, so it's a good time to do it because we've caught up with, with finances of it, I think, a little bit. So we, we put money into this, some of the five-year things when we got this flush of money. So I think now is the time to do, to look at any of those improvements for buildings and, and significant maintenance costs. Because what was the, we replaced one for a hundred thousand and we, we replaced it. And to fix it, to fix it was 150,000. Replace it was 100,000. Sometimes maintenance isn't the way to go.
Well, and I'd like to get, I think, I would also like to get department heads because I think we appear to be doing well at, at planning and, and our finances are good. So it would be good for me to hear from department heads what they see the advantages are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. And then once our department heads come up with a plan, then we can hear it, we can see it, look at it. Then you might need, probably going to need some help.
I think, again, I want to thank Bruce for the, the questions and the, and the information that you provided on it. Yeah. Gave me a lot of insight on how to move forward with it. As a, as someone who is trying to not to spend county funds, you know, on, on planning so much, I, I do like the idea of doing a hybrid if, when, as we move forward with, with question answers. And maybe if you have a spreadsheet that we could utilize, you know, that type of thing, just input. But like you said, we don't need you coming here digging deep into each department head and spending days learning what we already know, you know, within the departments. We want the departments to get the information, gather information, and then all the departments get together and put this in a, in a big spreadsheet.
Exactly. Yeah.
So.
Good. Well, it sounds like you're moving in the right direction towards county-wide capital outlook for the next five years and we'll be happy to answer any questions. So thanks for having me up.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks.
All right, Pat, we're going to have to speed up.
Yep. No, this, this will actually be very quick, Commissioner Nelson and the board. So can we do the whole discussion as we reviewed our last couple of board meetings? We just want to continue to provide information to you. So on page 34, these are just some agenda items that we thought would be best practice, agenda items from a committee, committee of the whole perspective on what some counties have been putting out is further informal county board work sessions and what they look like, how they're arranged and, and when they're scheduled. So it really was just information for you as we continue the conversation.
A question I have, so committee as a whole, what, what dates do these counties then meet their regular two times? And this would be a third meeting?
Right. It's a great question. Most of the committee of the wholes that we see usually meet one time per month, although there's been a few examples of informal meetings where they have at the end of each board meeting. What we propose for this county is, is to do it Thursday prior to the Tuesday board meeting. But each county varies in when they have it and how many times, but for the most part, it's usually once per month.
I, I would not favor a separate meeting for community or committee as a whole. I would favor, like we've had in the past, work sessions after, I mean, I think we're kind of doing that work sessions. And if there, we can open it up to any department. So a work session or a committee as a whole after a board meeting, I would certainly entertain because we, we are doing something similar. But maybe this is opening it up to more, more departments for information.
And Commissioner Nelson, there's several counties that do it that way. They'll have their committee of the hall or the informal work session at the, after the adjournment of their regular board meeting.
Kind of like what we're doing with policy, right?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Good.
So just information for you. And then the next one, page 36 was, again, benchmarking information on consent agenda items. I think what we liked about these, and this starts on page 36, is it sort of referenced the consent agenda with language and references the Roberts Rule of Order. It's called Consent Calendar. And it, we wanted to give you some examples of what counties have listed as consent agenda items. And for the, the public's understanding is at, at a point in the board meeting, you would approve anywhere from one to several items in one motion. And so if the board were to consider something like this, we would want to get some direction on what would be a typical consent agenda item. But certainly those committee of the whole meetings also can help with that. You can identify things that you would want on consent or other items you would like to be placed on a regular board agenda. And of course, consent agenda doesn't mean you have to approve it with the list of items. You can always pull it out when you approve the agenda and if you wanted to have greater discussion as a group of commissioners. But we do feel there's a lot of efficiencies in, in the timeline and, and meeting our, the timeline of the board and getting, being efficient with our board meetings. And so we listed a few items there just as benchmarks for you and what we think are best practices.
After reviewing some of the, some of the documents provided, I don't have a problem with consent agendas, but you, it looks on some of these counties look like they put everything under consent agenda and they don't have anything to discuss. I mean, so this board will be discussing the issues before us. I mean, but if we want to put some of the claims, some of the tobacco and alcohol licensure, but those might, do those need a separate resolution?
They need a separate.
So we just, do, can we, can we vote on multiple resolutions in one motion? So that would be the question. I mean, because.
It looks like in Sherburne County, they have several resolutions in their consent.
But is, I mean, is that appropriate or legal? I mean, is.
I just assumed it was somebody else was doing.
Well, I, I don't like assuming that some, just because another county is doing it makes it legal. But that's a question, Mary, you could probably ask. If we put multiple resolutions in a consent agenda, is that appropriate at the state? You could ask the Secretary of State, they would probably know that. But otherwise, I don't have a problem with consent agenda, but this, I mean, minutes certainly could not go under consent agenda because we always have minute questions. I mean, no offense, but like today was only two very, very minor things, but.
I prefer the consent agenda because if there's issue on there, an individual board member wants to pull out and discuss, you can do it. So like I said, the last meeting, a lot of the other government units at town do the same thing.
Yeah, I, again, consent, consent agendas are fine, but it's, and you, but we still go through those items. You just motion them in one motion.
No, you really don't go through them. You go through them prior to the, if you want to pull it out or through the discussion.
We don't discuss them typically in our meetings. We just motion and second.
If you've got a question about them, then you pull it.
I mean, you can still discuss them without, yeah.
Well, if you're going to discuss them, all in the consent agenda.
I'm just saying if you have a question under bills or, or you can still ask the question and still leave it in consent agenda. You don't have to.
Yep.
Yeah, correct.
Well, I think Commissioner Nelson, if I may, we are thinking. Well, I think, Commissioner Nelson, if I may, we are thinking was is we create a sort of a shortlist of typical consent agenda items with your buy-in and maybe we can bring that to the next board meeting and then if the board's supportive of it, we'd have some good direction and then perhaps at our September meeting, we can start doing a consent agenda.
But in order to do consent agenda, we almost have to have a committee of the whole discussion here, don't we?
No.
Okay.
No, they're just, they're, they're your daily, your.
Daily stuff.
Your daily routine stuff is usually consent agenda. So again, I, I think it's fine to have them, but it's, it's usually a pretty short list. I would assume for us, it's a pretty short list because we're, maybe me more so than everyone else. Talk a lot, ask a lot of questions.
Well, we'll put a.
I would, I would certainly move forward and bring, bring some of those things, claims and, and licensures and some of that.
Sure. Well, thank you.
You can always add to it.
Yeah, we'll, it can grow if we, if we.
And take away.
And if I may, Commissioner Nelson, just to, just Commissioner Meyer's point is, you know, we, we could see in situations when you have a committee of the whole meeting where you say, look, we vetted this, put it on consent agenda, you know, and you can get direction that way, but it's not required, of course, but we'll give you that shortlist of items we think would be typical and you can give us some direction and we'll have it ready to go in September. Moving on with your permission.
Yes.
Midwest Community Development Corporation, this was just information for you. The, this contract between Becker County EDA and MM CDC will expire at the end of the year. When I looked at the minutes from when you approved this contract, there was, the EDA basically indicated that staff could give direction whether it should go in front of the board or not. We just want to give you a heads up that we're working on this updated contract and certainly concurrently, we want to plan for bringing this contract to a conclusion, but we also want to plan for the fact that it may not come to a conclusion because this will have to go in front of the MMBC's board as well. And we're not, we're not only looking at services, but also cost of those services and other responsibilities. So it's an ongoing discussion and we'll be doing that through the EDA, but ultimately we might need some board buy-in over time. And so it was just information for you.
And it, and I, I think after, at the EDA, MM CDC board and the EDA board are willing to continue the contract.
Absolutely. Exactly, yeah. And then finally, I just added some additional slides relating to the legislative funding just to keep the board informed. These have been provided to department heads, these have been reviewed at the department head committee. And because some of them are more specific to departments, we're, we're asking them to, you know, think outside the box as they prepare their budget to look at these items and how it could be leveraged for the benefit of the county, but also for their departmental budget. So we'll continue to have discussions with the board, but I just want to let you know that those are ongoing.
Is this through AMC?
The, the slides were provided through AMC, yes, sir.
Do they have individual county numbers or not?
Um, oh, on what each county is funded?
Yeah.
I think we provided that in our previous slide. I don't think I included that here, but I'd be happy to forward that again. We received about 2.3 million total across those items, but I will send that sheet out to the board again if you'd like.
Yeah, we, I.
Yeah. I remember seeing that number.
We had it last.
I think I have it in here somewhere, but.
Okay, are you?
Yep.
Let's take the county attorney next so he can, do you, do you wish, go down, we're, we're moving on the agenda. Finance is next, but do you want, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, he's here for the closed.
Okay, Mary.
The first item that I have through finance is I'm requesting a motion to approve regular claims, auditor warrants over ninety days and additional.
Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next, I would like to add Resolution eight twenty-three one E.
One what?
One E.
E.
For Cormac Lyons Raffle. Let me just check here, September twenty-ninth, to be held at the Cormac Community Center.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
One twenty, was it one twenty?
One E?
One twenty-three.
E, one E.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion by Erica, second by Dave, to approve one E. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next, annually, each of the cities with tax increment financing are required to present a report. Any questions on the TIP reports for the city of Detroit, Lakes, Fraser, or Lake Park?
Nope. Entertain a motion to accept the TIP reports from Detroit, Lakes, Fraser, and Lake Park.
Move.
Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Erica to accept the reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And next we have the May cash comparison, sales, tax, and investment summary.
Entertain a motion to accept.
Move to approve.
Motion by John.
I will second.
Second by Dave to accept the May twenty-three cash, sales, tax, and investment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise. Morning.
Morning.
Item one is a purchase request for a full-day workshop for child protection workers in the amount of $5,000. Location yet to be determined.
And this is part of a previous grant?
I think, was the point used the opioid.
The child protection opioid response grant.
Yeah, that's from the opioid, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made by Dave and second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And lastly, we have claims.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Erica to approve the human service claims. All those in, the public health and transit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Before you go, I want to, want to thank your department and public health for setting up at the fair. I don't know how, how much use we had out of the, the quiet area for, for mothers, but it was nice to see it there and, and public health was there. It was, I mean, so it was well, well attended.
Yes.
And the sheriff's department, thanks for there and, and environmental services. I mean, the county was very well represented and I think they did a great job. Any other departments? Transit, they just vacated and left. They just like, they got out of there. But they left their building for, for the fair to utilize, so. Actually, thanks to all, all the county staff that helped out at the fair. It was very successful, even transit by giving their facility. Kevin had to check up on the building and, and keep the bathrooms open for, for us and knew where the secret bathrooms were.
I phoned it.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Denise. You locked it up though. I went there late and it's all locked up.
Yeah, I don't know why I locked it up.
Keep all the mice out.
Good morning. The first item I have for consideration is the modification of the probation period for the sheriff's department that we had discussion on. I did have one quick change that's not up there after I got clarification from the sheriff's department to also add in behind those positions, the bailiff, which I'll add into the language. So I would like a motion to include that in our policy.
Make a motion.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just.
Right, yeah.
Probation. So you want to individually motion for these changes in policy for each, each?
Or do, do more ones?
I would just like a motion and with the understanding that I will also include the bailiff in there because that wasn't in your original.
Right, but are you want it, you want one motion for all of the policy that we're gonna go through or do you want individually?
I would, since this is new, I guess I would, my preference would be if you would do a motion for this and then we, my idea was to do, you would correct.
The rest of, okay. I'm sorry, you wanna?
I'll make a motion to approve the probation period for the sheriff's department with the addition of the bailiff.
I'll second.
Okay, so motion should read, the language change in the probationary period in the handbook for sheriffs, but for the, for the, to include bailiffs in the, in the proposed changes.
For the one-year probationary time, yes.
Okay, is that, is that what everyone meant?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next item that I have is consideration for the, the language changes that we discussed with regards to the change in title, the safe and sick leave with all of the adjustments that we discussed.
Okay, just, just for those that are listening, you know, online and for in the room, this, this is what we worked in our, when we had our work session after our meeting last time, we walked, worked through these changes and, and kind of dissected them. So that's why we're not having a lot of discussion today. This is what we accomplished at our last public or our last session. So this is the new, it's under thirteen point two, our new safe and sick leave policy. So we're working on policy changes under this, so. We went through a lot of this and this is, this is basically new language conforming to the new requirements at the state.
Correct.
So.
Can we just keep going?
Page one and page two of this, which would be seventy-four and seventy-five on the packet.
Yep.
Can we just go, keep going through all the rest of the policies and then we'll just approve them?
Yep.
So let's move on to page, are any questions on these two pages?
No.
No.
Okay, so we are moving down to page on the policy. Thirteen-three, medical certification, that's on page eighty of one thirty-one.
I did have one comment I did find in that paragraph A, I believe it says county instead of state. I did change that way up the top. A, right at the bottom of A, it said county instead of state. So of course, when I read it today, that's when I caught that. So I will, I will change that. The only question I had, if I may, I know we had some discussion with regards to the out-of-state and I just want to ensure that I was capturing the intent of the council as far as, you know, our communities within Fargo-Moorhead and how far out we want it to be considered in-state travel.
I think Fargo would be in-state, Wapentin would be in-state and that's maybe, maybe Grand Forks.
Maybe Grand Forks.
Otherwise, I think the rest of it would be out-of-state.
Okay.
Any other?
If you want to scroll.
Or any border, or any border cities with North Dakota, maybe we could just say that.
Perhaps we want to then focus on H on here. I did just, we may want to modify that.
Or perhaps that reads.
So if you have a conference in Fargo, you can't stay overnight, is that what you're saying?
No, this is, it just, this is referring to one-day travel.
Yeah, I know.
So if you have two-day travel, wouldn't fall under H, would fall under.
Right, I just want to ensure that that's what we discussed and that I captured our conversation.
Because any, if you go to, I mean, you're not gonna do one-day travel to Wisconsin or.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking a little bit further out, like for its, you know, if you went to Bismarck or, you know, something further into North Dakota.
But even Bismarck's a long day travel, so I'm fine with this.
What the language has is.
Nobody's gonna be a one-day travel to.
I wouldn't think so, but.
No.
It's, it's a clause just in the event that that were to happen, I guess.
But it exempts all the North, the border, it exempts those from.
Border cities.
Correct.
So then we're going down to thirteen-three.
Page eighty, right?
That's page eighty.
Yeah.
This is just a, a form that I modified because I do reference having a form for the out-of-state travel that we could utilize. And I basically just modified this to reflect what we were, the information that, that could be, come before the board for approval of out-of-state travel, just to make it more formal so you'd have the information in front of you.
Any questions on that or not move to thirteen-three? You know, they, I still have an issue with on thirteen-three, a department head and/or human resources.
I have one.
And the only, the only thing I, it should be, and I know you'll be working together on this regardless, but if there's something, I think in part, in cooperation or in.
Along with.
Along with.
So along with.
I know, we talked about different language, so.
I mean, it just, if, both you have, I mean, both you have to be buy-in on that.
I think so.
If, yeah, I just think they should be along with. I mean, I think.
There's a couple more.
Yeah, there's a couple more that, down below two that.
So tell, just so I'm clear, what language would you like me?
I thought the along with or the partnership.
Department head along with human resources.
Okay.
Just change any and or to along with.
Okay.
I think there's a three or four in there.
All right.
And then I, under fourteen-twelve.
Fourteen.
The employee shall submit a, a written request for the medical leave of absence to human resources. I mean, the department head has to be involved in that also.
Yes.
I mean, and I don't know if you need it in policy, but that they should, you can't, I mean, you can't circumvent the department head and they have to be in the loop one way or the other. I don't know if you need it in policy.
I highlighted that too, then I read number two or letter B and then I think by, I don't.
Yeah, I think it covers it.
So like the form would be turned into human resources, but human resources along with department head shall be responsible for approving the request.
Yeah. So they are included.
Yeah, I had the same thing the other night, I heard the next one.
Yeah, that makes sense. So it's being submitted.
To you.
To.
To your office.
But you're approving it along with the department head.
If, if I may, it may be helpful just to give you an idea of how it works currently. If there's a medical need, the medical information, sometimes it'll come through the department head and then to me, or it'll come directly to me, then my communication going back, if they're approved for that, is something in writing to the department head indicating the medical leave if they qualify under the FMLA and also to payroll so they know how to code that as well.
Right.
That's the flow of it.
Okay, I think that, I think with, it's the understanding, it's a part, it's the both.
No, I understand that and that's really how it is working currently.
And then the same with fourteen-twenty-two, along with human resources, department head along with, I think you both, we just want to emphasize both need to be involved instead of the and/or. Anyone have any questions or moving on?
There's a, no, then fourteen. It doesn't, yeah, so fourteen-fifty-one.
Definitions, twelve-month period?
Oh, never mind.
Okay, I think we will.
Yeah, I thought I missed, I thought it didn't make sense, but I just read it again.
Okay, moving forward. Any questions? Are we down to, I'm down to page ninety-one. Any questions up to ninety-one?
Oh, letter B under nine, under, on page ninety-one or where is it?
Yeah, it says by utilizing safe land, sick eve.
Sick eve.
Sickie, oh, okay.
And it says land.
The L displaced.
Where are you at?
Letter B, just the L got displaced, so it's land instead of leave.
Oh, mine says leave, okay.
Just a typo.
So by utilizing safe land.
Leave instead of land, okay, very good.
Like that, that's a new word, we made a new word today.
Then under fourteen-seven, under, let's see, F.
Okay. Okay.
That's the part that we included, and we had a discussion, just so we're clear, that deleting that portion because it's covered under the other.
The safe and.
Yeah, yeah.
Figure is able to use the sick leave if there's daycare closings or school closings.
And if you go right on letter E, it ends with a word.
Oh, and/or.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, I think that was it.
Okay. Those are the changes that we worked through at our last meeting. Any questions, comments, changes on those? If not, we'll entertain a motion then to approve the remaining safe and sick leave policy, out-of-state travel policy, and general language that we've addressed up to page ninety-one in the packet.
So move.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Erica. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
It's a joyful, joyful work sessions that we have. All right. Does anyone need a break at this time?
We take sheriff first.
Let's go sheriff and then we'll.
Need one coming up, so.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Sheriff, members of the board. The only item I have today is Resolution eight twenty-three one D, which is a personal request for a deputy sheriff due to a vacancy.
Okay. Motion to the board.
Move to approve one D.
I'll second.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Be safe and have your officer safe during weekfest. Be careful out on the traffic roads. Make sure you emphasize that traffic safety.
Thank you.
Hope we have an uneventful, on the streets anyway, of weekfest.
I hope the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
If you need a break, let's take three minutes. If you need.
Three?
Three. Yep, you're up.
Better up.
Okay, good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
My first resolution is zero-eight twenty-three one B, and it's just a standard resolution that we do every year for our operating grants and any capital grants that we may have for 2024. So it covers our budgeting process for 2024 and anything going forward in 2024, so.
Move to approve Resolution one B.
I will second.
Motion by John, second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
The second resolution, oh-eight twenty-three one C, is a requirement by the state that our move to the new county higher building requires a lease. Lease from county to county entity, but that's what they required. The verbiage of the lease was accepted by the state, so we can now move forward.
And the, the lack of detail in this was required by the state. I asked the question of finance. So entertain a motion to approve one C.
Move to approve.
Motion by John.
I will second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And just as a side note, we should get $60,000 for the rent for 2024 to help. So, and we'll start paying in August for this year, so.
Okay.
So there will be some money flow down there.
To help pay, to pay your portion of the bond payment.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Steve.
Chair, board members?
Morning.
I've got a couple items this morning to go get approval on. The first one is establishing the recreational advisory committee per diem and mileage rates.
Was it forty?
Approving those at forty dollars per meeting and a current mileage rate of sixty-five.
Yeah, and I don't know if they were, if they were, just, if they took a per diem before, but I think we need to establish one at, and forty, we had a little discussion, I think forty's kind of a, a pretty standard rate right now, and I think we should revisit this at the end of the year for all, all committees to see where the per diems should be.
Sure.
We'll review at the end of the year, but it will get them up to the speed that most of those are at right now, so.
So we'll, we'll establish that and we'll make it retroactive for the meetings that we.
Right, for this year. So let's, do we need a motion for that?
If you could, a motion.
Entertain a motion to establish the.
Move to approve.
Motion by John to establish forty-dollar per diem and mileage rate for the RAC committee.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
I guess I'm too slow.
Thank you. You're slow, keep moving. One thing too, I want to talk about RAC, just another, in the bylaws, I, and I don't know, being as bylaws at the county yet, and we established them, can we just change them? Because the meeting, it states that the meeting should be held monthly on the first Tuesday.
Yeah.
I think it should just state, meeting shall be held as needed, you know, as called, or as called.
Sure.
Because, right, and, and the first Tuesdays, I mean, that for us, I mean, may be difficult. So can we just change that in policy today and just say, instead of that, instead of being specific on the date, as called or needed by the, by the lead?
Yep, yep, excellent.
One of, one of the things we were going to do for the next meeting was review the bylaws.
Okay. But let's just make that change today, so, because otherwise it's.
That's one of the things I picked out there.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
So just, we'll just change that, we'll entertain a motion to change the bylaws for the RAC committee to committee meetings be held as needed or called.
Perfect.
Any, I'll, I'll make that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Erica. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
And then.
In regards to the RAC, did you appoint another member?
I did.
Abby Anderson?
Abby, I appointed Abby, and she's on the Lake Park Betterment Committee, and there's quite a few people on there that are, that seem, would be really good. So I put in there that if she can't make it, she can ask one of those to sub for her.
Okay, so she'll still be the primary?
She'll be the primary and coordinate it.
Okay.
Needed. And if we need to change, if she says she'd just rather have someone else name it, we can change that later, so. But at least we got a name on that.
Sure, so she should be the district five.
When we still, we're going to advertise for an open position at large.
Okay, sounds good. The second item on the agenda is awarding the 2023 budcapping bid. There's two, two responses to the RFP, and Finance reviewed them and they recommended awarding to the little bit of New Eco LLC.
That's the lowest one for seventeen, seventeen.
And they, they were a provider last year.
They were, they've been doing this for a number of years for us.
So entertain a motion to approve the budcapping award to New Eco LLC in the amount of seventeen-nine-five-five-zero-four.
Move.
Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? Is that the right number? Did I give you the right number?
Seventeen thousand nine fifty-five-zero-four.
I think that's one.
Seventeen, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The only other thing would have been, you talked about the $3,000 in change for the.
We mentioned it in, in my reports, but we are adding $3,000, an addendum to our contract with Apex, because there was a, there was a function missing out of the, the package of three, if we remember.
Yeah.
But it was $3,000, so it was, it was approved, it was approved by department heads. But we wanted to make note to the commissioners that there was an additional $3,000 fee for the Dunlop shelter.
I think that's.
We don't need a motion because it's under the, it's 3,000 and under, so. But thought it was, it was noteworthy to let you know.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions on anything?
Thank you, Steve. You looked refreshed from your vacation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Glad to be back, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Glad to be back home, not at work, maybe. Okay, Jim.
Are you refreshed, Jim?
I'm refreshed too.
Good.
Just got back from a week. One item for your consideration today is a purchase request for some TV monitors for the new Public Works Meeting Room. I have a not-to-exceed amount of 4,000 for two TVs and 400 for two all mounts. This is kind of on the high end. Prices seem to change and vary. The prices reflected here, I looked at models that would probably be, be more conducive to a larger room. You know, with the lighting, there's so many different things in a TV, you know, and viewing angles and things like that. It probably will not be this full amount, but it could be.
One thing that you should probably check is, check with Judy to make sure that, I mean, we discussed, this might be a Teams meeting, it might be, you know, all the, it might need all those.
Connectivity.
Yeah, to make sure the TV you get has the, the right function, so.
Yep.
We could sit here and, you know, we're great at debating a TV, what TV should be best, but I, I've conceded that, just let Jim go get a couple TVs for that room and not to exceed the.
Just make sure whatever models you compare are the same models.
Yep.
There is, probably a little savings from what we discussed in finance, so.
Yep. And I've requested special general, but it's, as we discussed at the last meeting with our RAC purchases, we do have our final, oh, preliminary auction results, it was pretty favorable. In the end, we had about $15,000 in total sales. That does not, that's excluding Breyer's premium, but that's on, they pay that, the purchaser does. We just have to deduct like advertising fees and then their fees for labor for cataloging all this and putting it on the website. So it was a good, surprising results on all the equipment we sold.
And, and even, some of those, even if we don't make, I mean, we want to break even, obviously, but it, it shows that we're not just wasting it and hopefully, hopefully someone can get some more use out of some of those things. There were some nice things in there, but a lot of, a lot of stuff that doesn't have a lot of value.
Yeah. Well, out of the, I think there was what, 284 or something like that, only 12 items didn't sell, and it was like old typewriters, which obviously nobody uses, and some older-style microwaves and things like that, so.
So good.
Yep.
So you want to take, would you take that out of this, your.
Yeah, we can do that.
Auction funds?
Yeah.
Okay. Entertain a motion to expend up to 4,400 for TVs and mounts, two TVs and two mounts, to come, funding come from the sales of excess merchandise?
So move.
Motion by John, second by Dave. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Planning and zoning.
I texted him to come down, so.
I can address it as well, I've worked with Jenny O. on it.
Okay. Yeah, come up and state your name and.
Jeff Baumann, Enes Consulting, Wilmer. Because Becker County is a non-delegated county, it requires a, a public meeting, so that the county is informed of what is being proposed. Jenny O. is proposing to construct a facility, I believe you have all the information there in, over by Frazee. This was a site that a barn burned a couple years ago at, and so they are not, they're replacing the barn, but not on the same footprint, so that required a modification of the permit itself. In doing so, the, the actual animal units will be lower than what they have been, so. So there are, it is under 500 animal units at this time, is what has been proposed to the state.
Okay. Yeah, we don't have any information, actually.
Oh, really?
If you have a copy, it would be.
Um, I've got, yeah, I sent it all to Kyle, so. I mean, I do have the.
Kyle's right behind you here, so.
There he is, okay.
There's no action to be taken, but you were just holding it on behalf of him.
Correct.
Yeah.
So it's a reduction in animal units?
That's what we've heard.
Yeah, and it's not encroaching, there is a lake to the, to the west, and it is not encroaching any closer to, than what it had been, the, the previous barn had been, so.
So how do you want us to, we'll make a motion to acknowledge or accept that we've had.
It, it just needs to appear in the minutes itself that it was, it was presented to the board. There's no action.
There's no public input needed?
No.
Okay.
There's no action required by the board, so.
And I, I remember this fire, it was a, any fires is not happy, but it was.
No.
Too bad, it was too bad that that, that happened, but. So, anything else that you wish to?
No, it just, you know, the minutes need to go to, to the Police and Control Agency, and that, that fulfills what is needed.
Okay. Can you tell me what, what is a non-delegated county, or what would a delegated county be then?
Delegated county would be a county that would, would take the action, and they would, in a case like this, they would either approve the permit. Non-delegated county, the permit application, regardless of size, goes to, you know, to the county in a delegated county. So if it's under 1,000. So if it's under a thousand animal units, the county would act on it in a delegated county. Anything a thousand animal units and over, uh, just automatically has to go through the state.
Okay, and if a if a county is delegated, it still goes through the state after the county goes through it, correct? It would, if the report would be, you just forward your report, the county's report then?
Right, yeah, so the county will will forward uh the minutes of this meeting to the, you know, to the MPCA.
Right, but in a delegated, then we would still just forward, I mean, it would be kinda simple.
Well, yeah, in a delegated, in a delegated county, the the, it would not, it's not, it would not be a requirement unless there would be a conditional use permit involved.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you, we'll note in a minute that we had the, we had it presented and um thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Hopefully the barn gets built and up and running.
Yeah, we hope so too, thank you.
Thank you. Turkey's can fly, you know, so, don't do that WKRP stunt.
I can't remember.
Last Netman.
Yeah, I remember that. Oh, no, I'm showing the whole life.
Peggy, can you see if there's a three-two-o number on there and unmuted if possible?
You know, when I was serving, calling for orders at.
Are they there?
At the four H building, I go, cheeseburger, cheeseburger, Pepsi, Pepsi, it's surprising how few people even know what that is anymore. No, it's, it's. You don't know? You never watched Saturday Night Live, Jim Belushi?
I have watched.
Google it.
Saturday Night Live, but.
Google it.
Look that up.
Well, she muted herself. Okay, so after a little outreach, Pat and I were able to um get one uh comp plan proposal from Bolton and Mink. We have some representation from Bolton Mink online, um, if you would like to hear from them. They have extensive background doing these, they've done sixty in the last five years. So I guess, any questions you have, or?
Well, what do you wanna do, Kyle? Do you want to, are you gonna go through this, or are you going, are you going to introduce? Who are we, I'm sorry, is this Robin? Robin, are you there?
This is, good morning, Commissioners.
Well, I'll give you an opportunity just to introduce yourself, you're on, you're on this, you're on, we can see you online and we can hear you, so um just give us a quick bio of you, I know Bolton Mink is a very strong supporter at AMC, I see your booths all the time, so thank you for supporting AMC. But go ahead and, go ahead and do some introductions then.
Sure, good morning, um, thank you, Kyle, and good morning, Commissioners, uh, my name is Robin Kaufman, and I'm the uh proposed project manager for this, uh, for this contract. Uh, I am a senior community planner, uh, with Bolton and Mink out of the St. Cloud office, so just a a little south of you. Um, I have an undergraduate degree in natural resources and water resources and a master's degree in uh urban and regional planning, both from the University of Minnesota, and I have over twenty-one years of public sector experience, um, in both uh comprehensive planning and uh community outreach and uh public administration. And um I also taught graduate level course um in urban and regional planning uh for two years at the Humphrey School, so we are um super excited uh at the opportunity to work with you on updating your comprehensive plan as well as your zoning code and subdivision code. And um I'll let Moira introduce herself, uh, as well, she, uh, we worked together on a lot of projects and we actually just drove through Becker County, um, the length of it uh in May, we uh were in West Fargo for um an all-day engagement and then drove to Grand Rapids that night uh for our conference where we were the uh, the keynote speakers on on housing at I task a county, so uh we have actually recently just been through and would be excited to work with you, so I'll let Moira introduce yourself as well.
Good morning, Commissioners, um, I'm Moira Howenstein, I'm a senior planner with Bolton and Mink, and um a certified planner as well, but I'm also an architect, I spent uh fifteen years in the real world designing, building, pulling permits on the other side of the counter, and um then I joined the dark side, and and I'm joking, I went into government for about ten years and absolutely loved the regulation and how to really balance interests between private and public interests, and I know that we will be doing that with you. We're very excited, not just for us to be working with you, but for you, because we really feel like this is an important step, uh, doing the comprehensive land use plan and the zoning together is really brilliant, because you really take control over how the process of development occurs with the long-term vision, so you really impact uh standards with how developers come in and have to go through your process, and that's the zoning code piece, kind of the the meat and potatoes of it, how it hits the street, and then the the land use is more of an opportunity for us to look at those emerging uses, what are maybe new districts that we could be uh looking at new uses, what are the goals, and aligning those two together really makes it more efficient, and that is really why we're able to reduce the timeline from the eighteen months that was in the original RFP to possibly fourteen months, we we certainly can use the full amount, but we want to be more efficient for you, and we know that you guys have a lot of um special focus areas. I spent two years uh drafting the short-term rental uh ordinance for Washoe County, which is in northern Nevada, and it's become the model code for Airbnb and for uh a lot of the the west coast jurisdictions, so we can certainly help you with that, and we can help you with housing, availability, diversity and attainability, and definitely balancing interest between the natural resources and growth, and we can help you with some of those economic development incentives as well, so we're very excited, thank you for for having us.
Well, thank you for your summary, um, I I'll tell you, I'll be honest with you upfront, if this was just a comprehensive plan, I wouldn't support it, cause our, how how do you, how do you encourage counties or the citizens of counties to utilize the 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 comprehensive plan? Cause I, we've had a comprehensive plan on the shelf and and I can, I can probably tell you that, how many times we've looked at it or referenced it at this board meeting, and and it's not very often if, I think I remember one time, somebody in the audience or two times someone in the audience referenced it, it's not a document that's heavily used, and to spend the, you know, significant money on it is, in my opinion, a not good use of funds, but um we do need zord ordinance updates and we have some big concerns, and is there a package where we just look at zorden, zoning ordinance reviews instead of the comp plan, or do you see a value in that comp plan that I'm not seeing?
Robin, I can, I can answer that, I'm sure you have your thoughts too, that's absolutely true, that is why we're taking a di- different approach, comprehensive land use plans are needed to establish future growth, where are you headed, what's your roadmap? And they sit on a dusty shelf and are not used because they're not designed to be usable, we do it differently, we actually create a digital version of it, it's available, readable, present twenty-four seven, we are text light and graphic heavy, so that it is, people don't wanna read a thousand pages, you know, we tend to be briefer and to the point, but we do need to establish that vision, where's it, where does the county wanna go beyond five, ten, fifteen years? The land use is more about the the process of approvals for the actual day-to-day applications, and what are the standards, the fences, the setbacks, the, you know, how do we mitigate impacts, that's the meat and potatoes, the zoning has to comply with a comprehensive plan, it is a requirement in statute, and so those two really go together, having a comprehensive plan helps you actually get uh funding and grants, there, so there is a usefulness to it, but we absolutely hear you, we do not want to do an old-school comprehensive uh land use plan for you, absolutely not, but we do wanna gather, harvest the the opinion of the community as to where they wanna go.
It's been said and by, and I, it's been said about commercial use in the county, and I will quote, "Commercial use can be any, and should, is anywhere in the county," now that was a past statement from this, from a member of the board, um, so with that approach, what would a comprehensive plan be good for? If we're gonna, if we're gonna put a commercial anywhere, if we're gonna put feedlot anywhere, if we're, I mean, I just, I just worry about, I mean, so that you're saying that the planning is, if it's in our comp plan in the future, that these are not commercial areas, commercial could not go there, is that what you're saying?
Yes, so the uh comprehensive land use plan would establish your future land use map, and that is where we would decide if though, is it, is it appropriate to have commercial everywhere, those are the discussions that we would be having, we would be looking at infrastructure capacity, if it is everywhere, do we have the ability to actually execute that vision, and is it compatible with nearby uses, or do you want more of a mixed use and what it density, what scale? So those are the discussions that occur under the comp plan, that's why those are so important, and then those feed into what your standards are for executing that vision uh today and in the future, so um, you know, w- we need to really get into the the data analysis to understand where are the services, where are the infrastructure capacities, what is feasible, what is shovel-ready, and so sometimes we do a heat map that actually shows where those capacities are today versus where they need to be and what kind of investments uh the county needs to do in order to get to that vision, but the vision comes first with the basis in data, so that's how we develop it, so um saying that commercial is everywhere usually is not a good strategy.
Well, I agree, I agree with that, but.
Well, you had mentioned, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
You had mentioned too that it's it's important to have an updated comprehensive plan for grant funding, can you expand a little bit more on that?
Yeah, um, I wouldn't be able to quote the exact grants, cause they do change a lot, but we have found uh communities wanting to do comprehensive plans so that they could show future growth, and the work that that we provide is used as a basis for applications for either infrastructure, sidewalks, ADA, um, capacities for expansion that, you know, uh water sewer plants, so it starts with kind of that broad analysis of saying, we wanna develop in this area, or we wanna annex, or we want to create a special industrial park, but we need more water sewer utilities, and so, you know, here's the basis, it's almost like a a very light version of a feasibility study where you say, this is the comprehensive plan, here's the data, and and then we can plug it into that application, of course, we can be more specific and 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 work with you on applications, which is not a part of the scope, but it is the beginning of um where one decides to go for funding, and and it provides a basis for uh for that request.
Only thing to add to that, too, um, a lot of the applications are becoming um more comprehensive, I guess, in in what they're looking for, so, you know, where before it's like, oh, I need a road, um, you know, here's, here's the proposal for a road and here's what it's gonna cost, um, a lot of funders are now saying, well, if we build this road, you know, how many jobs is it gonna be serving, um, how many, how many people are gonna be using it, are we addressing safety, are we, are we adding uh trails that people can bike on and use for recreation as well as transportation, so they're looking, looking for more comprehensive approach than just, just the basic request, so.
Thank you.
The other problem I have is, you know, as a elected, elected board, um, in four years, you could be serving a a totally brand-new board and and the direction could change the, completely what the board, what what the next board or what future boards would like to do, and so a a twenty-year comp plan is, I struggle to, I struggle with it, I mean, it's, I I think we have ordinances that have to be updated, but um I I do struggle with with spending this kind of money on a, on a comprehensive plan, but. Any, and Kyle, you have anything you wanna discuss on the?
No, I ju, I would just would comment, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be twenty years, the this, it's a moving target depending, it it may need another update if the county does change direction, I mean, it could be, this plan could be good for five years, ten years, fifteen, I mean, if it, if it starts to change direction, and then you 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 do need to update it.
And maybe updating it at that time would be.
Significant.
Significantly cheaper.
Right.
Instead of waiting twenty years to.
Right.
To redo it, I mean, I think, I think we need a vision, and we need to know where we're going and what what we want for Becker County, and I think getting public input is the best way to to get that.
I think we, we need to do something, because that, one of those twenty-some years old, if I sat in on it when it was originated, we either have to update it or just get rid of it, because there is people that refer to that all the time on, on issues, so it's outdated.
Well, and by statute, we have to have it, and and my idea is if, if we go through this thoroughly, one, I did discuss with them, one of the biggest problems we have right now is in seventy-one, the county was blanket zoned, so we'll, we'll go down to Big Corn Run, Melissa Sally, it's zoned all agriculture around there, where in fact, at that time, it was all residences, it should have been zone residential, that, that's one major thing.
I don't, I don't agree that uh the whole area should be zoned residential.
I mean, around the lakes.
That'd be one acre lots in the whole.
I'm just saying, like, in the shoreline.
You're saying riparian?
Right, I mean, Dakota Beach should not be zoned agricultural, is my point, um, the second thing is, is that this, it should be used, um, by statute, you are to rely on your comprehensive plan to make decisions and granting land use decisions, it's, it's not been used, but it should be used.
You stated that it was required by statute.
Like a variance, that, that's one.
You stated, is the comprehensive plan required by statute?
Yes, you have to have one.
Pat, do we have to have?
Well, no, I'll clarify, I mean, it is governed by statute, but I I think it's strongly encouraged and recommended that.
I thought.
Have a community-based comprehensive plan per statute, but it's not required.
Okay.
Well, that, Pat has been telling us is not required, it's recommended.
I I thought it was.
Yeah. That it's recommended but not required.
But it are.
I thought.
Statutory.
I'm sorry, Kyle, I thought it was required, but recommended that it was reevaluated every twenty years.
I can bring the statute up if you like, but it's.
Well, we could have two experts here, is it required or recommended? Robin, do you have a, do you have an input on that? Do you know if it's required by statute or recommended by statute?
It's required in the seven metro county area only, it is recommended and advisory to have one outside of that area in greater Minnesota.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But when considering land use decisions, like, I think it's probably question three, and granting variances, it relies on comprehensive plan.
If you have one.
Yeah, I don't, I, it'd be hard, I don't, I don't know what you would do if you didn't have that, but I guess it'd be non-applicable then, maybe, um, that question?
Well, we have, we have one, one company that's, that's shown interest at this time. I think they're a very respected company in the state, so I I, not sure, are you recommending making a decision today, Kyle, or?
Yeah.
I, I personally think we need one, I need, I think we need to update it, I think, going off of what Kyle says, being on planning commission, it would be beneficial to have an updated one to help make those decisions, so that they have um a reason, they they have something to balance when you have controversial decisions to make.
Kyle, does the planning, does the planning commission recommend that we have? Have they, have you talked to them at all about?
No, no, I mean, I I don't have a formal decision from them, but somebody like Cole Scaline, who is very boisterous on that board, um, you know, he, this is a tool he uses.
Absolutely.
Yes, he references it.
You rep, you can reference it and it can misrepresent the rest, representation too, I mean, just because it says this is a residential area, doesn't mean you wanna go to residential lots in a residential area, there's a big difference between um having one-acre lots throughout the county, because it's residential, if you, you know, that was one of the quotes in the past, um, certain areas of the county are residential, because that's what the main use is, but doesn't mean we want residential lots, which are one-acre lots, all all throughout the county, I mean, there's a big difference between those two statements, and I think you can misinterpret or lead to the, what you want in that, so, anyway, I I think, I think we, I think a couple things that you've said made me appreciate your, your, your way you wanna go about it, is, it's not the old shelf on the book, um, cause that, that, that tool doesn't, has no value, I don't think, I don't think it has enough value to spend a hundred thousand dollars, um, the tools that we would use is something that guides the. The tools that we would use is something that guides the commission and the, and the board, and the zoning ordinances that we are so desperately in need of. Those, I, I would like to touch base, those you think you could present to us, like the, the bed and breakfast and the, some of the penalty phases. I mean, some of those are where we're, where we're really lacking, and this is, the push for some of those ordinances are, are what I'm really hopeful for, hopeful for in this, in this environment, I guess. Is that something you guys feel you can present to us at the, at the end of this? Some ordinances that we're seeking?
Absolutely, that is a part of this. Yes, Commissioner. Basically, the zoning and subdivision ordinances will both be updated, but we will go through workshops and, and really get into understanding why is it that we have so many variance requests? Are there some, you know, applications that just keep happening? And we don't want to keep you busy with things that instead we could solve in code and, and, you know, make your lives easier so you can focus on the more critical aspects. So we will, we will delve into the zoning and subdivision ordinances. We will at the same time be very efficient about those discussions and having parallel discussions about where we want to go as a county, where do we want to grow? And that is that future vision, that future engagement. And those two come together. Although the comprehensive land use plan takes a little bit longer, so probably the 12- to 14-month timeline, the zoning and subdivision code will be done sooner than that, but they really do mirror each other because they work hand in hand. One is a, right, daily operations, standards, how do you execute the vision? And the other one is where do we want to go? If we have one use today that we don't want in the future, how do we transition to that? And that is your decision-making tool. That's why that comprehensive land use plan is so important. So absolutely, you will get the full package, you are saving money by doing both together, and at the end of it, you will have full control of your destiny and how you grow.
Right.
Or close to it.
So you, you said, you said that the zoning and subdivision updates could be done sooner. What's the timeline on that?
It really all depends on how fast we make decisions together and the feedback that we get. I'm gonna assume it's gonna be great and that our workshops will be very productive. But usually, we can do a zoning and a subdivision ordinance update closer to eight months versus the, the comprehensive plan usually takes, you know, sometimes two years for, for some firms, but we have learned to really do it more efficiently, so we're closer to the 14 months for the comprehensive land use plan.
So a couple of those ordinances, by next June, July, June, anyway, we could, we could get them addressed, so.
Yes.
That would, that's, that's, that's a significant for us.
Those are the pain points, right? Those are the pain points that you're feeling right now, so we want to really get started with that. But as we're having those discussions, let's have those meetings be efficient and talk about even the broader picture.
Great, right, okay. Well, thank you, I mean, go ahead.
I was, I was just gonna say, as far as process, you know, we'll spend the first three or so months just doing some engagement, you know, really finding out what are those issues, understanding, you know, existing conditions, what, what the public is, you know, has identified as issues as well as vision. So that's kind of the first three months, and then that gives us most of the fall and winter to do drafting of both the comprehensive plan sections, as well as really focusing on the, the subdivision and, and zoning ordinances, so that we would be ready to have some drafts, hopefully by next spring, to take out for some, for some feedback and say, hey, did we hear you? Did we hear you right? Do we have this right? And do we need to make any tweaks or adjustments? So it really comes down to, you know, getting that community engagement so it feels like something that people are, you know, they have some buy-in to, too. So, and so that helps us get to that, those documents that actually people use and reference, and, and helps you with the policymaking and decision-making.
All right. Well, thank you. You provided me with a lot of information, a lot of good, good feelings about moving forward with this, so. I wa, I was not having a lot of good feelings about this prior, but you, you've sold yourself very well, and, and I, I think we can come, come together, especially if we can get some ordinances on the books within a short time, because we've had some people waiting for those and, and asking for them. So, thank you. Any, any other comments or questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Kyle?
I have nothing else to add unless you guys have any further questions.
Okay, so what, it says, comprehensive plan proposal review on, on our, do you want to, are you looking for action item?
Yes.
And what would you, how would you like it worded?
Just a motion to accept the comprehensive plan proposal from Bolton Mink.
And the dollar amount is?
Ninety-nine.
Thousand nine hundred and eighty-four.
Well, we did have a $100,000 limit, so. That was our maximum. You sure, you sure you didn't want to stretch that up another?
Sixty bucks.
Up to $100,000? Okay, entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the, what Kyle said, to approve the proposal from Benton Mink.
Bolton Mink.
Bolton Mink. In the event, in the amount of?
Ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-four.
Thank you.
Hey, we have a motion on the floor?
I will second.
Motion second by Dave. Any other discussion? The question, when, when can you get, when are you gonna get started if we approve this motion, then? What, what's your quick timeline on getting up to Becker County again?
We can work, work with your staff on getting a contract in place and hopefully do a kickoff either late October or early September, maybe right after Labor Day.
Okay, so we can, you might want to include in the motion for the motion maker in second to authorize the board chair to sign the agreement?
I, I.
Okay, is that, is that acceptable?
Yep.
Yes.
Any other, Pat, anything to add?
We're very pleased that the board's.
Excuse me, so, without any, without any other questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, and welcome to Becker County, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kyle. Any, anything else?
Moving on to the next item, the main idea of this is just to have you review that. It's identical to the city's cannabis ordinance. Just like your thoughts and consideration, and if you approve of it, we will set the public hearing date.
Okay. Kyle, or Brian did hand out another, a second ordinance for us to review. It, it's something that the, his attorneys.
Sheriff's Association and the County Attorneys Association, they utilize the same retired Assistant County Attorney.
Okay, so.
It's a little more comprehensive, it covers the specific item of smoking. I, I tend to favor the, the second one. You know, the first one was pretty vanilla, tailored after the city version.
Okay, so, so at your convenience review, the, the second one that Brian handed out, I'll, we'll get you a copy. It's just one that, it's just one that he handed out at break.
I just got it, so I'm not trying to rail rigging.
We're just, we're just looking at, to present at our public, our public meeting if we still choose. Do you need a motion to set a public hearing then at our next meeting for the review of the?
I, I think so. We were thinking August 15th, so you just, whatever time you guys choose.
Okay, do we have anything on the agenda for August 15th, any public hearing time we'd like to set?
Well, not at this time. I mean, the board can decide what time it is, but we have no other public hearing items yet.
What time do you think?
Oh, I would, might suggest something like a 9:30 or 10:00 might work. And I guess, could I ask, could I offer something, Commissioner Nelson, is you're having a public hearing for both of these ordinances to get feedback, or?
One ordinance.
Or, or the second ordinance that was handed out.
Well, it will be published.
I think the board would have to decide.
Yeah, that's what I mean, the part of that motion would be that.
Yeah, you, you're correct. Mr. Chair, you have to publish what you intend to enact.
So we have two versions, we have the shorter one that's tailored after the city's.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Let's just take a minute to review this so we, or no, we.
We don't have a motion.
We need a motion, so let's just take a minute to review this, to see if this is the motion that we, this is what we want published.
What, Brian, what do you suggest? What's your suggestion?
I suggest the model one that's just came out yesterday, late in the day, from the Sheriff's Association and the County Attorney Association. They're very similar, there's a lot more wording, but if you look at page five, section three, subdivision two, I like that extra provision to talk of, that would essentially be a Clean Air Act.
Okay.
Marine.
We can quick make some copies, Commissioner.
Ah, that's.
Sure? She's gonna make six.
Are you saying that we need to publish five pages?
Six pages. No, this, there's some spacing that can be cleaned up.
And you can condense it, but.
So I, I got a question, Brian, on, on.
Yes, sir.
Letter G, public place.
Letter G.
So, like, when the smoking ban came, you could smoke outdoors of a bar or restaurant? Does that, does that exclude? It says, it says bar, restaurants, food establishments, but it says indoor area used by general public, so does that, you know, you know what I mean, is that?
Where are you saying that's at?
Letter G, public place.
Public place means a public park, trail, public street, sidewalk, any enclosed indoor area used by general public, including but not limited to theaters, restaurants, bars, that's indoor yet.
Yeah, it's indoor.
Places licensed to sell intoxicating liquor, wine. That just says indoor.
That just says indoor.
Place of public accommodation, means a business, refreshment, entertainment, recreation, transportation, or any kind of whose good service is.
I'm gonna say this says, no, you can't, because you can't smoke it on a public street or sidewalk.
It says you can smoke it at a public residence, including yard, private property.
Bar.
On the premises of an established or event license to permit onsite consumption.
I would think that might fall under the bars that have smoking designated areas.
Outside.
I would think that would be, because that, if that's what.
Do we, do we want, do we, do we want that?
As a bar owner, would you want that?
No.
You want, you don't want marijuana smoked in your?
Not really, no.
Well, then, that's.
But is that, is that in each individual establishment's?
Well, keep in mind, you're in the city, so that's.
I'm in the city, yeah.
That's gonna be their.
So I read their, that's their ordinance, yeah. That, not this one, but the, the other one. Basically, when I read the cities, I interpreted that you could not do that. I guess it isn't, I guess that would be up to the establishment.
But then you have to keep in mind, you know, if there's, if it could be inhaled by a minor pursuant to sub-three prints, too, then that would probably be not allowed.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah. Because there could be a minor that would be eating at the restaurant, and they'd be outside.
Not, certainly not drinking.
Not drinking.
Not at some of them, anyway.
Not at ours, no.
Sure?
If we publish this ordinance and we wordsmith it, is, I mean, is that allowable at our public meeting then?
Then you do.
Or public hearing? What, what is public hearing good for if we can't change it a little bit?
I would think that with public input, you know, concerns, comment that the board can make.
You can modify it a little bit? I think the spirit of that statute is just to notice the public that you're.
Taking up the issue, so to speak.
Yeah. No, we threw in something not related to.
Okay, so, as long as we publish, publish it and, and we can wordsmith it, get some input back.
Public hearing, you take comment, and you may probably make some changes.
Right, right, that's what I mean, if, if not.
Which is maybe why there's a requirement of a second hearing, because it's, right? So you would.
Do we post?
That's a city.
Oh, that's not, okay.
First and second reading, you have one.
Yeah.
Public hearing, you can make changes after the public hearing.
Gotcha.
So we publish the intent to enact, and then we publish what you decide.
Gotcha.
Got it.
I would, I would be in favor of the, the longer one.
Yeah, okay, entertain a motion to, to have a public hearing at our next board meeting at 10 o'clock? At 10 o'clock, Kyle, is that appropriate time? At 10 o'clock to discuss the cannabis ordinance, and we'll post in, to post the one that the county attorney has provided for, for review.
The second one that I provided.
Yeah, the last one, the lengthy one.
My intent would be to clean this up spacing-wise, specify it to Becker County and get it to Kyle for publication.
Okay, so we want, in the motion, to get some latitude on the publication part of that.
I will make that motion that Commissioner Nelson said.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, to publish and have a public hearing on the Becker County cannabis ordinance on our August 15th meeting at 10 o'clock with the presented ordinance published as required by state statute. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, anything else?
Could you two stop up when you're done? I just have to run something by you.
Yeah.
Do you want to stop up there?
Yeah, upstairs. Or text me, and I can come down.
Okay.
That's the way to phrase it.
Okay, any other business before, before the counting? Anyone?
No.
If not, we are going to, we added to the agenda a closed session, so we're going to attorney-client privilege on pending litigation with Team Service 320 Human Service Bargaining Unit. We'll entertain a motion to do that, go into closed session for attorney-client privilege on pending litigation with Team Service 320 Human Service Bargaining Unit.
I'll make that motion.
I, I will second. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And again, this is strictly for attorney.